Okay, the time is just after 6:30. We're going to open the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School Committee meeting, March 27, 2024. Roll call to open the public meeting. Ms... Here.
Ms. Lee.
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 She's in the room.
Where is Brynn?
She's right there.
There she is.
I'm going to say hi.
Also present Superintendent Strauss, Ms. Terri Fleming, Ms. Ashley Boulay, Mr. Greg Goodwin, and Ryan Blanchard, as well as various principals. Is anyone recording the meeting? Besides Lakeville. No? Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as part of the superintendent's updates, we will open the public hearing for the budget. The school committee will hear and discuss the remaining FY25 budget presentations from our principals and directors. As always, we will continue to have budget discussions and conversations advocating for the educational needs, social and emotional needs of Freetown-Lakeville students. The school committee will vote tonight on the FY25 budget. Even though we have a lot of internal work to do, including tracking, decisions to still be made regarding that tracking. The budget vote will be based on the Lakeville Town Assessment of 703,000 over the FY24 numbers and a Freetown Assessment of 334,000 over the FY24 numbers. It is also based on revenue assumptions known at this time from Chapter 70 and Chapter 71 in particular. And to illustrate, our Director of Finance, Ms. Deirdre Farah Welch, will provide in detail the FY25 assessment sheet.
Great. Terri's got that on the slide. And I'm going to jump up to the... Over to the podium.
Hi.
So, Terri's going to pull up the assessment sheet. And what I thought would be important to present to you tonight is a little different than, from what I understand, has happened here in the district, Freetown-Lakeville in previous fiscal years. Previously, the district has gone through the budget process. And as the meetings have happened and as things have been developed, new assessment sheets might be issued. When revenue is known, new assessment sheets might be issued. When one of the principals comes up and needs their class sizes or has instructional materials that they want to talk about, assessment sheets were changed, assessment sheets were issued. This year, as you know, our preliminary assessment sheet that has been published was published on February 14. That assessment sheet had been issued to the towns, the finance committees in both towns, as well as the school committee and school community. We had posted those assessment sheets on the website so that the towns could understand what the potential assessment would be with what we had out at the time, February 14. Since that time, the town of Lakeville has gathered with the town of Lakeville's finances. Their finance committees have worked together with respect to their levy limits and the other needs of police, fire, library, et cetera, et cetera. They're also understanding what revenues Lakeville's are entitled to from the federal and state government. So, they're doing their budget development. Freetown is doing the same thing. What revenues do they have for Freetown? What levy limits are coming into Freetown? And so, they're working with their assessments. Once we published that February 14 assessment, a few weeks later, the time period later, I don't think it was a few weeks, sorry, time period later, we heard from the interim town administrator, excuse me, from Lakeville, who said he was recommending the increase to Freetown-Lakeville of $703,000. What that automatically generates, because you're a two-town region, is a corresponding assessment to Freetown. So, if Lakeville can go up 703,000, that means Freetown can go up a corresponding amount of money. So, at that time, the assessment sheet was changed to reference Lakeville's increase of 703, the corresponding increase for Freetown, which was 334. But that left a gap. That left a gap between the budget you were presented with on February 14, the assessment from Lakeville and Freetown. That gap was $680,715. There it is. Can that get bigger?
Not the amount.
Thank you. So, what the district did was understand the revenue gap between the assessments at the time, 703 from Lakeville, 334 from Freetown, what that gap was and what we could do about it. We can go in and make $680,000 worth of additional cuts to our level services budget. We could cut out the math specialist. We could cut out some other programs and offerings to our kids. We could take a look at financial strategies currently in place. And we can take a look at our reserves in Circuit Breaker and School Choice and how we've been managing those funds to be able to close that gap. I want to go up to the screen here. This is your assessment sheet that you have in your book. But what I've done is I've chunked it out and I put color to it. And I've chunked it out because it's really four pieces. The top piece is your enrollment at Freetown-Lakeville for resident students of Freetown-Lakeville. That is your October 1 enrollment. On the left-hand side, you'll see this has no choice students, and it calculates the percentage by town, as you can see on your screen here. I added the operational increase that you see in the middle right-hand side, sorry. 3.79% is the operational increase. That goes to some discussions we had last year about, hey, what is your operational increase as opposed to the assessment increases or decreases? So, that's why I added that for you there. You then take out two categories of net school spending to calculate 43,972 after that calculation, which is your total net school spending requirement. I chunk it now down to red. Red is your revenue. That revenue starts on line three of your assessment sheet in your budget book. This is Chapter 70. The first is your Chapter 78. The next is your... Your Chapter 78, I'm sorry, is $11,739,059. That is the governor's budget. You are at the governor's budget right now. It then goes to the House. It then goes to the Senate. And you're hopeful that the Senate gives you what the governor gave you. But when the House does their budget, they're also looking at April 15 tax revenues. So, you've got to get through taxes, and you've got to get through the House budget, and then you've got to get to the Senate budget to have that governor's budget of $11,700,000. Last year, the governor's budget passed all the way through the legislative cycle. So, that's what we're hopeful. Circuit Breaker reimbursement. I've broken this area out to two areas for us. The actual number that you are going to be receiving next year is $1,236,050. Right next to this area now is an area called fund balance. Those are funds subject to appropriation by the school committee in your fund balance called Circuit Breaker. I am recommending to the school committee that you use $300,000 of those funds in Circuit Breaker to offset the expense of your new student that you have coming in in FY25. That's a good fiscal move because you get that reimbursement in fiscal '26. We've got to pay 100% of that student next year, and then we're looking for reimbursement the following year. So, that's a good offset for you to carry through. Your total Circuit Breaker reimbursement... I'm sorry, your total Circuit Breaker funding there, that therefore is $1.536 million. We then go down at continuing the red district anticipated revenues. We get miscellaneous revenues, interest income in the monies that we have in the bank. We also have Medicare reimbursement by the fabulous work that Jen Seberg and I and Adrian do regarding applying for those reimbursements. They don't come in the mail. You have to apply for all of these reimbursements. Excess and deficiency here is a revenue area. It is zero. This budget does not use any excess and deficiency funds to balance its budget. Next, we have school choice per student. These students are non-resident Freetown-Lakeville students who apply for open seats to attend Freetown-Lakeville School District. We expect next year, under the actual column, $320,380. That consists of the schools, the students at $5,000 a head, plus you receive dollar for dollar any special education service or increment it's referred to in that reimbursement also. That's why it's kind of a funny number, not divided by 5,000. Next, we have the fund balance column of $380,715. That is available school choice funding, subject to appropriation by the school committee, to be used in this instant to fund your gap in FY25 to the tune of $701,095. The two fund balance columns right there add together to $680,715. And that was the difference between the February 14 assessment sheet, the assessment number from Lakeville and Freetown, and what we needed to have a level services budget. Next, you'll see the green number. The green number is now in an area that's gray. If we can move that up just a little bit, at least it's gray on my sheet, it's white here. This is the third area of this assessment sheet. This area is for the purposes of determining net school spending, this foundation formula that generates funding in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Our required net school spending is divided into local contributions that you see here between Freetown and Lakeville. These are state-generated numbers. These are not generated by anybody in this room, except for maybe the officer. No, just kidding. Anybody in this room. It's a state funding formula. So, they tell us what your required local contributions are. And what that really does is that generates whether you're eligible for more state funding under Chapter 70, or if you're at foundation, you get no more. We are at foundation, so we get no more. These numbers illustrate, these numbers from the state. We are asked to take out transportation, and we're asked to take out debt because those two areas are not included in your net school spending calculations. That's why that area is in gray. It's informative. It takes the state information, and then it takes our debt and our transportation in there as well. And the last area, the blue area, is obviously the key area, an important area. It's the actual assessment calculations that you see here in blue. What we're doing is taking the budget, we're subtracting the revenue, and we're coming out to the number here on the right-hand side of approximately $30.6 million to be assessed by the apportionment enrollment percentages that you see at the top in green. And the resulting assessments here, you see the increase in the assessments over last year of 334 from Freetown, or to Freetown, excuse me. Next over, you'll see the 703, which is the number that came out of Lakeville. And right underneath there is the number that came out on February 14. That was the original number. And so, that difference between the two is the $680,715 that we were looking for the funding for in the reserves that are subject to appropriation by the school committee. So, that takes care of where we are from the assessment perspective. But then, the school committee is going to be voting their budget tonight. But yet, we're still not doing, finished doing the work that we've been doing. And some of that work was talked about already, and some of that work is going to be talked about tonight. And so, on a second slide I have is how we are tracking. This is a running record of sorts. It's a tracking document of sorts. And it's what I have been using during these conversations, in these discussions, to track. The first thing, for example, is health insurance. On the left-hand side, I have the account number, so I can track that. What's the title, health insurance? Is it increasing or is it decreasing based on these conversations and what we know of at the time? And what is the reason, which is on the right-hand side? Health insurance, for example, we have a 4.35%, 4.38% increase. We budgeted an 8% increase. We went through each plan that's offered by the district. We took out the people that are retiring and moved those over to the retiree plans. We then accounted for new plans that would be coming in to replace the retired teacher plans. So, you don't lose a plan. You got the plan, then you got the retiree plan. You also have to take a look at qualifying events that come in. So, we anticipated that two people may get married next year, or one of them may get married and someone else might give birth. So, we're going to have qualifying events somewhere outside of open enrollment. So, through the analysis of health insurance, even at the lower rate, we can reduce your health insurance line item approximately $81,000. But you've heard me talk about property and casualty. So, we come to our next area, property and casualty. We're going to be increasing that $125,000. That is because you've heard me talk about the market. You've heard me talk about we can't shop you any... We can't be shopped around anymore. Your risk ratios are so high. You've got triple net leases at your elementary schools. There is no other way around this particular cost. Next, we'll talk about the warrant article for Freetown-Lakeville's cabling infrastructure project that we carried in our budget that should go to Freetown. Ryan will talk a little bit about that, as well as we want to make sure that the E-rate funding goes to the town of Freetown. So, we want to make sure that we're collaborating with that as well. We both make sure that we need to know what we're doing there. So, as you can see, as these running records, I can continue and talk about substitutes, district-wide... Oh, I skipped one, I'm sorry. The Adjustment Counselor and Guidance Counselor conversation that we had had last week, there seems to be a difference in the high school shell with respect to carrying an additional salary that I'm tracking down a gray. So, I have right there TBD is a decrease. I'm hoping I can find some money there to decrease that line item. However, we've talked about increasing substitutes. If you increase your substitute $10, $12.50, whatever that is with the number of days in your sub-activity, that is going to cost you some money. That goes in the increase column of TBD. Notice I put Chapter 70, regional transportation, in Chapter 71, vice versa, education funding. I put TBDs in both, increase and decrease. I'm hoping that nets out, and we get the governor's budget. But we should be tracking that as we continue through budget development and understanding exactly where we're going from that perspective. But I wanted to present those two things to you this evening, as well as make sure folks understood why we're going where we're going and how we're getting there.
Great. Thank you, Deirdre. Given this is the public hearing, I think we'll hear from the superintendent next on the budget process and your work in collaborating with the towns, followed by presentations from at least one principal, I believe, or two, and the directors, discussion by the school committee, and then also public comment and questions. And that'll be the public hearing part of the budget process. So, with that, Superintendent Strauss.
So, I received a call from Bob Nunes and Deb Petty for us to sit down. Our meeting lasted about an hour. Bob was... Bob started the meeting and was pretty positive, as was Deb. It was really a collaboration as to this is where we are. This is where we can be, so we do not go beyond the levy limit. And that's where the number of 704,000 came from for Lakeville. We had constant communication throughout as to what we would do, how we would do it. Same thing with Deb. Very, very positive. So, there really wasn't a lot of anything other than collaboration. And I deeply appreciated, from the beginning, their statement to us as to this is what we can afford. You know, we need to be fiscally responsible. We need to make sure that we provide a great education. But as I said in an email to the entire staff, if we look around the Commonwealth, whether it's Braintree cutting 100 people and redistricting, it's happening throughout the state. And there are overrides all over the place. And it was absolutely... There was no way that I, as superintendent, wanted to go to an override. There are lots of things we need. There are lots of things we want. But it was about people, and it was about ensuring that our services could be met at a high rate while staying fiscally responsible. We focused in on compliance for special education. We focused in on our EL compliance, which our EL population has changed. And one of the things that I heard last year, in year one, was how are we going to sustain our math specialists? Because they were the only S R-funded positions. And so, we did that. That was a priority for us. They have done spectacular work, and we wanted to make sure that we could keep them in the operating budget. And we were able to do that. And we're very... I'm very thankful to both Deb and Bob for how collaborative they were. And I'm comfortable speaking on behalf of Central Office. I'm comfortable with this budget.
Thank you. Back to Deirdre.
No, I was just...
Waving?
Yes.
So, with that, I think we start the presentations. Do we start with the school first and finish off schools?
Yeah, let's go to Jack because he was not here last week, two weeks ago, excuse me.
So, I would like to just... I mean, you've had an opportunity to review the budget shell, to look at the different line items relative to both salaries as well as supplies. We followed a very similar process that we followed in the past in terms of being able to reach this budget for the middle school. It is a collaborative effort that includes meetings with the administration, the curriculum leaders, as well as those curriculum leaders meeting with the teachers on a grandeur level. The first step in the process is an analysis of our current academic offerings, as well as our program offerings. We identify during that process if there is a need or are there needs to adjust or to increase our programmatic offerings. In this current year, we identified no changes to our programming, no need for any changes to our program. If you recall, a couple of years ago, I was standing in front of you asking for a change to a STEM program, which has been implemented and has had a lot of success, including STEM 7, STEM 8, as well as computer science. Those have been going well. We don't have any need to make any major changes. We're going to be making a small adjustment to the second ELA class in sixth grade, but it doesn't require any change in terms of supplies or personnel. The second piece of it is then the conversation from staff to curriculum leaders, and then curriculum leaders as a team to discuss supplies, instructional supplies and resources. We identify those places where we think that there's going to be a need for an increase as a result of inflation, or if there's an adjustment in terms of what particular resource is going to be necessary. For the most part, though, you can see, as you go through the supply line items, you can see that they're pretty much the same as they were in previous years with small increases as a result of the needs for each one of the departments. But overall, as a result, you can see there's a modest increase, and that's a result of the staffing contractual requirements, as well as increases in some supplies that were necessary in order to meet inflationary costs.
Thank you. Questions from the committee? The stuff chair recognizes Mr. Owen.
Just a couple of questions. Where in the budget are the guidance counselors?
So, there's a... It's in the line item. I mean, it's on the sheet.
Okay. I know I have to have my eyes checked, so if someone can point me to where, because it is a different line item.
2710 is the second sheet.
It should be a page.
I'm missing sheet.
Do you think about salary guidance?
Middle school?
Yeah.
All right. Always let it...
It's the second page that didn't get printed. It's the second page that didn't get printed but got sent out via PDF.
Okay. All right. Well, that explains that.
In the current guidance counselor, we have, in that line, we have three guidance counselors, one Adjustment Counselor, and a Guidance Secretary.
I know we talked about subs at the last meeting. Why is the middle school flatlined and the other four seem to have gone through the roof? I don't understand why, but why... What are we doing different at the middle school that seems to be relatively...
I don't feel that. I don't feel a flatline. I feel that we are using...
Well, it's flatlined compared to 30 and 40% increase on the other schools.
Thank you. So, as we kind of talked a little bit last time in regards to district-wide substitutes, we took the 10-year analysis through spreadsheet of costs associated with substitutes. You throw out COVID, you kind of figure out why you've got so many subs in certain years. Did you have certain activities? But those budgets are actual costs that are going to be moving forward for substitutes based on analysis. I certainly can add that to a tracking component to retake a look at that. But that's based on analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Owen. Any other questions from the committee? I think, Jack, out of just respect, we've asked all the other schools' wish list items.
So, we don't identify... I mean, we... At this point, we have identified the needs of the building. We always have additional wish list items, but for our needs for next year, this budget fulfills those needs.
It satisfies them. All right. Thank you. I guess we can take a public question now, but interestingly, I wonder... Go ahead.
So, why don't we...
Yeah, actually, let me do this just so we can... Why don't we, yeah, actually, let me do this just so we can...
Interrupt. Lakeham has asked that any questions, not come from the audience, but up at the podium, I'm sorry. Just so people can hear.
Okay.
If you could just say your name and town.
Margaret French, Freetown Finance Committee. I just have one quick question, looking over all the different school budgets, the increase for classroom teachers and all the other schools was 3%, and this one is only 1%.
No, the increase...
With an increase of 25,000.
From middle school?
Yep.
On minus 275,000 increase.
So I have...
Just 2305, five teachers' classrooms.
Is that including the school choice offset the title one, is that what? Because the other, the other ones...
Oh, I see, for just the, just that line, yes.
Yes, just the classroom teachers.
Yep.
Is that correct, only 1%, not the 3?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I think in keeping with the order of the budget book, it would be Mr. Blanchard next.
So you've all had a chance to review the technology budget, and the technology budget was aligned with the tech three-year plan that we discussed last year. Do you guys have any questions about any line items?
Can you, not really clear, so first question, the data administration line item, is that the DB position that we dot back to? What's the decrease in the data administration? It's in the top of page two. So second line down, we have zero and FY '25 reducing it 72.1.
So, Deirdre, this line item was, I believe, distributed out according to the tech roles, and I know I'm not the finance person, but I do remember a conversation, Deirdre, around taking that salary and, or taking salary for the people in the department and putting them on the...
I'm just looking for the right line item that you're referencing, I'm sorry.
Top of page two.
Oh, page two is different.
Second line down.
Thank you so much. I printed a much bigger paper for my eyes, so I'm so sorry. Thank you. Yes, so that's the conversation, thank you very much. We had had, started to have with respect to your revolving fund for your technology insurance plan that collects the funding for parents to have their technology, their Chromebooks fixed, for example. So that funding is supposed to either buy the supplies and materials, but these guys do such a great job on salvaging everything. You go into their offices, they're salvaging everything. So our staff is doing all the keyboard work, all the work and all of the work and the salary expense to do that. We took a look at those funds, seeing what they were generating. How much were we actually running expenses and move more of the salary component to offset, not just the actual expenses? That's how we've moved forward, some of that offsetting technology insurance funds from parents.
So in prior years, are we saying the 72.1 was covered by that insurance revolving fund?
I am saying that the 72.1 that you see in the FY '24 column was covered as the school committee general fund. And in the FY '25 column, because you have monies in the collection of the insurance funds to maintain Chromebooks, and our staff are performing that maintenance without having to buy equipment, because they're salvaging the equipment and fixing the equipment, we're moving some of the salary to offset the cost of maintaining that insurance plan for the fixing of the Chromebooks.
Okay.
Certainly, if the school committee wants to change that thought process, you can do so, but you have funding in that area being collected. And the way to look at that kind of funding over the revolving years, it's parent money. Take a look at your food service, for example, that's federal in parent money. You've got parent money in fees, athletics, what are we doing with that? We have parent money in fees for technology insurance program, and we have parent money in parking. Growing those over the years, you want to take a look at two-year, three-year, how is that expense working? Are we using those funds as intended, but we're salvaging so much? The guys are fixing them without purchasing any equipment, but they're spending so much time that instead of just collecting those funds over the years, why not offset a salary? And so that's what's been done in this budget, using some of the parent-generated revenue to offset the data salary person that in the department is doing some of the insurance fixing on the Chromebooks.
So we're not eliminating that position?
No.
But they're being funded by another source?
Thank you.
Okay. So the concern I have with that approach is, let's say, next year we come back, right? There's not enough funds in that insurance piece. Now it looks like we're adding a new position into the budget.
You have to start bridging, right? So when we take a look at bridging and looking at logic and patterns, and you've got, this isn't 100% of those funds in that line item. So if you continue to grow those funds, you're growing parent funds, saying that we've got this expense, I'm trying to offset the expense with the funds you're charging parents.
I understand what you're doing, I've just, as we look at historically, right?
Exactly.
So now we're seeing, it's the same thought process when we have state grants. Though state grant goes away, we still have an operational budget component, right? So, okay, I now understand what you're doing.
It's more matching the revenue with an expense within a period of time that just doesn't build parent money, quite frankly.
Where in this, and what is the quantity of Chromebooks that we're purchasing this year?
This year is going to be 180 for the high school and then 237 for Grace.
And are those broken down in the individual school sections of these?
Yeah, you'll, you'll see that there are larger line items, like, for example, like the high school is 93,000, I think it was.
Okay.
It's in that number and same.
So that's where the, didn't that include both Chromebooks and classroom computers? Is that all rolled up into one?
There's no classroom computers, that would be Chromebooks, that would be Adobe Lab, like a small little computer lab, because the Chrome, I mean, the laptops that we have presently are having a hard time running that software, and we get a lot of complaints that they can't use Photoshop, because Photoshop is memory and CPU intense. So that, that's in that as well at the high school.
And I'm sorry, what's the total number, the 180 at the high school? You said?
The total number is 93,605.60.
He's got some number of Chromebooks.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, 180 Chromebooks.
Yeah, thank you. And then at Grace, what was the total?
237 at Grace. And we did those numbers based off of the incoming FES and AES kids that are presently, presently in the two schools, and that's where we came of that, with, I think about 10 extra roughly as a buffer, so we have some new kids. And then we decreased the high school 180, because last year's incoming class was around 160, so it gives us a little buffer if some kids decide to stay or if we have new enrollment.
So we actually went through October 1 enrollment, the favorite day of the school year, to see exactly what the migration of students were going through so that we could continue the redeployment plan, the purchase plan, based on those numbers going through. So we actually went down to that, that point, if you will.
And what does that leave us with? Those that are, those Chromebooks that are, by vendor, not compliant?
We're just basically spacing stuff out, so we have about, obviously, the total enrollment this year was 2,700 kids, so that's the amount of Chromebooks we have. We have Chromebooks that were purchased pre-COVID, and we have Chromebooks that were purchased when COVID hit. Some of those Chromebooks, we're seeing, you know, they're saying the life of the Chromebook is 10 years, but the physical aspect of the Chromebook is not going to make it 10 years because of the amount of back and forth and abuse. They have, one of the things that we do have in the line item is to slowly move away from bags and go with like a clamshell-like out of box, hoping that this will decrease some of the breakage we're seeing. And, you know, we could put it in the bag, it can withstand some of the forces, you know, when the bag gets dropped, or if it gets kicked, or, you know, whatever.
So we're in tear, it's going to happen, but I think last year there was a topic of conversation, it's a seven-year license.
It went, it went from eight, the auto updates went from eight to 10 years.
Okay.
But I don't think we're going to see 10 years out of a Chromebook.
Physically?
Physically.
Yeah, okay. But from a security update, if...
Correct.
If teenager is soft and gentle in how they handle things, in theory, that's what you would get.
Correct. And if, I'm hoping by purchasing the cases, this will prolong the device, so we get more years out of it. So instead of purchasing bags that we're in need of, because obviously we're in tear, we wash them every summer, this will replace bags hopefully soon, and as we standardize getting the same Chromebooks, it allows us to use the same case and repurpose parts if something comes up. So like if a motherboard dies, for example, we can then use those parts to replace in a device that either gets accidentally broken or...
Obviously, in the next three, we look at it now, four years, Chromebooks are going to be a big issue, right? You know what I mean? There were several that were purchased around COVID time, and we got to figure out a equipment replacement strategy that can't just happen in one year from a budget perspective. So we really need to look at that. What happens to the Chromebook if it's replaced? Meaning, is it, we only replace it if it's damaged to a point that it's not worth keeping around?
It depends on what the damage is. So sometimes we'll see damage that a motherboard's bad and a screen, when you pot, if you go to replace the pots on that device, it's almost the cost of a whole replacement of a Chromebook. So it's a case-by-case scenario. So when it comes in, it gets evaluated what it is and what the cost will be dependent on if they have insurance or they don't have insurance, and then bills are sent out.
Can you talk a little bit about the, what, what are we getting in the new, are we purchasing a new nursing software management system?
No, we've had that. That's SNAP software. It's not SNAP health, the, what we did add, though, is incident IQ is which, which is our ticketing system. We just moved it into a different line item.
So it has nothing to do with the nurse?
No, it does not. But that, it's labeled as nurse, but as we're going through with Deirdre and Jack, that some of, we call, I call them buckets, but their line items will be adjusted to more reflect where we're encompassing cost.
That gets to some of the nomenclature that we tried to clean up on some of this shell versus what's the Tyler technology and some of the conversations that we're having. We're also drilling down into that shell and putting, budgeting things where they belong. So if it's not software instructional license subscription, doesn't belong there. So we've actually had to go in and move some stuff around on that particular shell so that we can do apples-to-apples comparisons, but also particularly move expenses to where they belong. There were just a few, but that was important.
In the, is there any other district-wide IT purchases that we're doing? Whether it's a new backup server, we've done a database server, are there any other that are district-wide, not school-specific, but...
No, we did the sand two years ago, the backup sand.
Okay.
The only other big things that are, you know, up and coming is obviously network infrastructure that we talked about, which is a really big one, telephones. We upgraded fiber at the campus in Lakeville, so when we do put the new switches in, we'll have a 10-gig backbone. The E-rate project that we talked about went out to bid, and that was the warrant that we're looking to work with the town of Freetown to upgrade the backbone infrastructure at that building and be ready for the future.
Okay. So there's nothing in the budget, in the operational budget here that has an E-rate association with that?
The only thing that has an E-rate association would be the FES infrastructure upgrade project.
We're putting that in a separate warrant article, correct?
Correct.
So it's not reflected in this operational budget? And where I'm getting at is, I know that we have to budget for the total amount, but then there's a, there's a reimbursement that comes associated with it.
Okay, so, yes. However, in this particular example, Freetown owns the building, and the 470 is going to be filed on behalf of Freetown. Then Freetown's going to go to the warrant article to the town and get the other warrant article funding to match the money. And they're going to pay all the bills and we're going to do all the work, plus the vendor, of course. But that's, that's why it's coming out of here. That 54,000 is being removed and help it offsetting your property and casualty increase.
Okay.
And then Freetown and I are working together on making sure that the 470 is filed correctly and under the numbers so that you get the money and that they get the revenue from the 470, and then they're budgeting the expense.
Okay. So sorry, to dumb it down one more time to my level, there's nothing in this budget, the operational budget, I don't, not a separate warrant article, that has an E-rate associated with it?
Not after I take the warrant of article money out. There's nothing else but the E-rate money? I don't know how else to say it, I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
Let me make sure I answered all of mine. I think, I think I'm good. Any other questions from the members?
I have a question.
Yes.
Where is it? It's under the technology department account number, the Sal Admin Tech Professor. Is that one person?
Is that the very first line?
No, I think it's the next one, because the top one goes down 18%. I'm talking about the one that's going up 10%.
First page, first line, correct? Salary admin tech professor or pro?
Professional.
Professional, thank you, Jack.
Go one more page down. It's at the top of two pages. I'm talking about the second one. That's going up 10%.
It's above that database, the one that I reference, the data administration.
Yes.
So I think when you're looking at your screen, you're probably seeing a different...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, 10%.
That's one person?
This right here, no.
Oh, okay.
These folks right here?
Yes.
Those are all the tech support, that's not just one person.
Okay. Four, right, Brian, four?
What's that?
Is that four?
No.
There's a total of six in the department with me.
Got it. And then the other question I had is not necessarily budget-related, it's more of in the air, is there ever going to be a point where you shift away from giving Chromebooks to everybody? What was the Chromebook like before COVID? Because how much of their day is Chromebook? How much of their lessons are they writing?
So can I address that from a curriculum standpoint first? And then we can go money if you want. But the, but prior, 2019, 2014 to 2019, building the digital literacy standards into frameworks and having those go through included a lot of learning on technol, not a lot of time learning on technology, but learning about the technology. Our kids will work in a system just like, that will be less paper, right? And so the one-to-one Chromebook initiative started way before COVID. COVID was a huge accelerator to it, because then we needed it for remote learning and so forth. So on the average, I couldn't give you exact numbers, but you don't walk through the buildings and see kids on their Chromebooks doing learning and the teachers, you know, behind their desks drinking coffee. The Chromebooks are used for learning purposes, and like the Amplify ELA demonstration you saw, it's used for collaboration and for creation. So the more students learn about how to embed their knowledge in presentations, and not just Microsoft and Excel and stuff, but those are included, because that's what businesses are looking for. So if you go backwards from colleges and career pathways, what they, what the corporate world is looking for, kids that are savvy in tech... world is looking for, kids that are savvy in tech, that they can be functional coming in and learn that job without having to teach them how to do the technology. So the digital literacy standards are really huge and one whole strand of it is about being able to function on, on a computer in all the applications that it could hold.
But are they still required to write certain assignments?
Oh, absolutely. In fact, we have diligent teachers about that mind-to-hand coordination of writing and.
And not only is it graphing and the concern about students not being able to write, the concern with AI. And so how are we ensuring that students who are turning in whenever they do something on.
That's their, it has integrity, right?
Right, something that's on a Chromebook, how do we know what their original writing was? So we start baseline in terms of they write, they have to learn how to write. I mean, the idea that many of our students graduating now barely know how to write in script, you know, that, that's a national conversation. But I'm really concerned about those students who are going on to secondary school and how are they going to have an understanding of AI? And so we've got to be able to continue to incorporate technology in teaching them how to effectively use it. But it's not, it's still a tool. It's not replacing anyone.
Layer on to that the cybersecurity they need to learn about and appropriate use and.
Right. Well, my question came from the budget standpoint, but also, you know.
Sorry, you found me on a good topic there.
I understand the usefulness and you're right, it's important to be ahead of curve. But with the literacy rates, I think a lot of that is contributed to heavy tech, technology use. So with younger kids, I didn't know if that initiative was planning to peter out, but I understand what you're saying and that's just where the question came from because it's a big.
Well, our younger student, they're, they're a district in which our primary school students are taking home Chromebooks. That's not happening here. I don't see that ever happening. I don't think it makes sense. You know, the question becomes grades four, five, and six, you know, where do we level off and say they're not going to use them? I don't see it going away. So it's like anything else, how do we teach people how to effectively use it?
And one of our big initiatives, Brenna, this year has been writing. So it is, it is manual writing that we've been working on and analyzing their responses to text and so forth, so. But having access to computers and what computers do for our world is important and a part of frameworks.
And state testing is going to all computers and so they're writing on computers.
Well, it is. There are no more tests.
Yeah, it's all backups.
SATs, ACTs, college courses.
It's all on the computer?
They're all on the computer.
Everything.
No more.
AP test will be all on computer. That's why.
Any other questions from members? Yeah, just, so this is a, I have asked for many years for a complete technology plan that doesn't just focus on asset replacement, right? It is what we're doing for professional development so that we are staying ahead of the curve on cybersecurity. It's what are we doing to, as we bring in tools to educate staff and what have you? That's that whole technology plan. It's a multi-year plan that goes into that. The professional development I don't see in here and it's probably an area that needs to include it because of the fact as we talk about security of our students, we do have students that not only access on the Chromebooks, but they all have their own personal devices that are across the board that connect to our wifi, what have you. So that's an area that we definitely need to make sure it stays on focus point.
So I will say, and then you can speak about PD, I will say that Ryan and his team provide, do a great deal of PD for staff in terms of all of those things that you just mentioned. For us to go out and hire professionals to do PD, you're talking 10 and 15 and $20,000 at a time for money we don't have.
But it's professional development for that team.
Well, they, they get it and they're constantly going to webinars and the state has done, actually, so I apologize, the state does a really good job of providing webinar, webinars and seminars that are free on cybersecurity, on AI and those kinds of things.
I do have some sliced into professional development as well to ensure that they can go to places like MasQ and to, oh, help me on the.
Meta, Meta's another one.
Yes.
Thank you. On the last page at the very top, our Free Town Elementary School, it says instructional hardware are those computers as well? And if so, why weren't they in 23?
Did she say 11?
No, Free Town. It's 2453, if that helps.
Top of the last page, Ryan.
That was the line item that we talked about for the FES wiring infrastructure cable project that Deirdre was saying that the money was going to be taken out of.
Does that answer your question?
It's a wiring project.
So that's where the 54,000 is coming out of.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Questions from members?
I just have two follow-up questions regarding the state testing platform, TestNav. I think it's open, we were talking about Chromebooks, some of the older books, are you able to download the requirements or do you anticipate any issues with students testing on the older Chromebooks?
All the Chromebooks we have are in compliance with what version that the OS has to be for TestNav. So we're meeting those requirements now, but over time, that'll eventually, and that's why we've been slowly buying smaller buckets of Chromebooks and then spacing them out so they all don't come at the same expiration date.
Right.
To be sustainable.
A technology plan that I assume is, is referencing. Second, that SNAP software, was that part of the Aspen rollout and is there a connection with the SNAP database that teachers can easily identify allergies or any medical issues?
No. SNAP is its own nursing software that they use separately from Aspen.
Because they're required to do state reporting and they aggregate all their data on that platform. It's different than this.
And it has to do with immunization too, they can get that information directly from the doctors.
Questions from the public on, in the area of technology? Hearing none, I think that gives us Ms. Boulay in special education.
Great.
Your turn.
All right. So similar to what Mr. Higgins had said and what Deirdre had previously mentioned, we took our budget in a different direction this year. We met as a whole group on multiple occasions and in regards to special education and English language learner services, we looked at the district as a whole and followed trends and populations throughout the district and how they were moving and how we can best support the students. So with that being said, we are looking at a level services budget where we are able to provide our staffing through attrition. And I am open to any questions that anyone might have regarding the proposed budget sheet or any questions about the special education population or needs.
Thank you. Questions from members?
Ms. Boulay, I know part of last year's budget was a lengthy conversation about forecasting the number of students. We're a year ahead now from that conversation. Can you talk a little bit about, you know, back then it was, we're expecting 104 students in some way or fashion being part of the special education budget? Can you talk about where we're at with respect to that? I know we've had numerous discussions that that 100 is over a period of a school year, but can you just level set, no pun intended, where we're at overall?
Yes, so I was hoping that someone was going to ask this question. And as I said during a number of meetings this year, a learning curve for me last year is that you can't predict special education numbers. You can't predict who's going to be eligible for special ed. You can't predict who's going to move in, you can't predict who's going to move out. And we talked about that at the town meeting too. We get what we get when kids move in and we are responsible for them as a public school. So last year around this time, I think it was about February, I had predicted a number of 604 kids. I did note in that memo specifically, which I did bring just for reference in case, that this is an assumption, an anticipation, could be more, could be less, and that it does not take into account students withdrawing or transferring out. So that was based on October 22 enrollment, which was 491 special education students. I looked at our evaluations from that school year last year and I had overpredicted by 24 initial IEPs. So we actually ended up picking up 77 new special ed students last year instead of 101. So I did overpredict by about 24. So that's 491 plus 77. And then we had a total of 18 move-ins for special education, which I also overestimated by only five. So that really brought us to a total of 586 students predicted for this year instead of 604. So I really wasn't off by that much. However, then we need to take into account, as I noted, that we did have students move out, 16. We had 21 12th grade graduates from both in district and out of district combined. And then we had 19 students leave us to go to either BP, OC, or Bristol-Aggie, which brings us down to 530 students. Currently to date, we are at 526, including our out-of-district population. So really, even though I beat myself up all year about this and being off by that many students, the prediction wasn't really all that wrong when you take into account the students who were withdrawing, transferring out, or graduating.
Thank you. Related to that, how many, for the current year, how many evaluations do we currently have in queue?
So this is heavy, all right? So the total number of evals that have been conducted so far, completed, are done, are 197. If we compare that to 2017, our total evaluations for the year were 195. So we're already beyond where we were halfway through the year in 2017. Currently, on top of that 197, we have 129 evaluations currently in process pre-K to 12. So this is already setting us way beyond what our number has been in previous years. In addition to that, last year in January, we were at 102. So add two months to January and we're already up 95 evaluations from where we were last year. So we currently have three school psychs full-time that are divvied up across the district and currently are paying out for contracted services because our psychologists cannot keep up with the influx, which is actually one of the increases that you'll see in our Student Services Budget section line for testing supplies because we obviously are in need of a lot more testing material for our psychs to keep up with the influx of evaluations.
In, sorry, of the 197 evals?
Mm-hmm.
Trying to board this right, I'll sound insensitive.
How many were found eligible?
Yeah.
I didn't actually go through that. I can actually go through that and prepare that for you next poll, not you next meeting, sorry. But I can prepare that for the school committee for next meeting. I thought about going through that. I do have.
Roughly speaking, 50%?
More than 50%.
Yeah, it is definitely more than 50%. So as of January, we had 77 initial evaluations. So initial students that were found initially eligible for, for special education.
I get it treated like data.
I think that was in January. I have it here somewhere, sorry.
So even if we sit there and said of the 129 evals, you go by the similar logic, you're still looking at 60 additional.
Oh, it's more than 60, yeah. Of the 197. So of the 197.
I was looking at the 129.
That's just in the line right now of testing, kids being tested.
Right, so if you, notwithstanding what we've already done, right, we have 129 still in queue. It sounds so impersonal, so I apologize.
So to put this into perspective too, currently at FES, in our preschool alone, we have 27 initial evaluations for pre-K students. That's insane. And if all, I don't even want to think about what happens this year if a majority of those kids are found eligible. Now, mind you, some of those students are going to be found eligible for maybe speech only.
Yeah.
Or won't be found eligible or OT only. Some of them we will have to bring into our pre-K, some may get into our integrated classroom, maybe some will be in our substantially separate. But that's a lot of evaluations in process for pre-K alone.
Okay. And I know we shared a concern about response times for outsourcing of the psych evals. Are we still seeing decent response times, especially with using the collaborative, what have you?
So we have about three outside providers that we're tapping into and they are just as equally busy on the outside, which is becoming difficult, extremely difficult. I don't want to underestimate that. We are pulling our current psychologists to pick up with overflow. For instance, we pull our elementary psych to come up to the high school, we pulled our middle school, go down, go down to elementary. And even that is, with these numbers, is just adding to their, their workload. So again, they're doing work after hours on the weekends and we're compensating for that in addition to paying outside providers to do our testing. So there's a lot of money being spent on additional resources to keep up with the, with the number of evals that we have in front of us.
But we are still in compliance to?
Yes.
The overall process as far as evals and we're doing so, okay.
For the most part, yes. We are, we are making it work with what we have, which is not an easy task. And I think for service delivery-wise, we're up against, we're up against a couple bumps at AES for sure. We've got a very large population of third graders that are spread across all of the special education teachers. We have used some, some funds internally for positions we haven't filled to try to find a long-term sub to help pick up those caseloads and serve as liaisons and service providers, but we haven't been able to find anybody that is able to come on and take on that role, which is also an uphill battle right now is finding staff because everybody is looking for the staff and fighting for the good ones.
Also? No, but I'll let something else. Question from Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I know that there's been a great human cry over the numbers and the increases. Do you want to theorize why?
There's really no rhyme or reason. I think everybody is seeing it everywhere. We've talked a little bit about before that Free Town Lakeville does have a good reputation for special education. And if you look at surrounding districts, we're not Fall River, we're not Taunton, we're not New Bedford. So people are coming here because it is suburban and we're a smaller district where their students are able to get more individualized attention. I mean, and I think the need of students is higher too, you know? There's really not an explanation. It's, it's a pretty fair process that we have to go through to identify. It's not something we can structure.
We talked about this last year. One of the other things that I think needs to be kept in mind is that parents are much more shrewd, services are available early, very early childhood birth to three, in which now what's happening is 10 years ago, if a child wasn't rolling over, wasn't at a tracking at particular level, generally the approach was, we have time. Now the approach is, we need to get services. And once they're in getting services, we end up here, and, and I'm going to say the same thing I said last year. I heard last year, things are not sustainable. This isn't sustainable if we don't figure this out. If our school psychs say, nope, I'm not doing this anymore because I can do this one-to-one and, and work per hour diem at home, making an exorbitant amount of money, I don't know what we're going to do to get school psychs because there are none available.
And everybody's looking for them right now.
Correct. Yeah, this isn't a Free Town issue, this Free Town Lakeville issue, this is a national issue.
Similar to the budget crisis, right? It's not just Free Town Lakeville, it's everywhere.
Right. To follow up on that, the ramifications of COVID and homeschooling, how much of an impact do you have, did that have on? Parents may, may be realizing that there's a problem.
Right. So one of the things that we've identified is this, this, this big, larger cohort of students that are, that are in fourth grade currently, moving to fifth grade and are rising fourth graders that are going to be moving to grays. This is a huge population, which would have made those, those students four or five years old during COVID. So that is during, like I said in the previous meeting, those are the critical years where you build those foundational skills and exposure to learning, right? So if they were home during COVID and not getting that pre-K and K introduction to skills, now we're seeing that. However, on the flip side of that, in special education, we also have to follow, like I was just saying, a very tight protocol in terms of identifying. a very tight protocol in terms of identifying someone for special ed. And there are a lot of exclusionary factors that come into play that we have to consider before saying, hey, your child has a specific learning disability. But that's getting harder to do because students aren't making progress as expected. And how many years can we blame COVID? We're already almost five years out, right? So how, how long can we keep blaming it?
Also?
I just want to add, though, I know from just years and years and years of watching this that we are much better at the earlier evaluations than we used to be, and the data prove that the earlier you intervene, the more successful you are. So, and I also want to point out that our percentage is not off the charts. It's, I see it everywhere. So it's not like we are unique in this sense. We're not.
Right, correct.
Just a follow-up before we get back to Mr. Owen, and thank you for stretching the resources we provide. Can you just clarify, and I'm sorry if I missed this, there's an initial eval, but there's also a reeval, which is also time for testing, so that must back up.
Correct. So an initial eval is obviously the start of any special education process. If a student is found eligible, they are on an IEP until three years later when we reevaluate them. And at that point, they could be exited from special ed, or they could still require special ed. More often than not, we see that students continue to require until they get to the older grade levels where there is a better chance where they're dismissed.
So on the numbers you provided before, that was just the initials? And running alongside of that is also the reevals?
Yes. I did not count the students that were dismissed from services because again, it was a smaller number when looking at initial evals, which is the bigger impact.
Great, thank you.
Steve, Ashley and her team does an absolutely phenomenal job. I think it's important for the public. And we've had this conversation previously. We had it at Regional FinCom. We've had it a number of times. Our out-of-district placements are not any different than any other district, but we have to remember that out-of-district placements, we don't necessarily control. And, and if a student comes in who is medically fragile, for example, and needs an out-of-district placement at $300,000, we are responsible for that. Even if we did not do the diagnosis, even if it had nothing to do with it, those parents move here, that suddenly comes out of our budget. Not every out-of-district placement is $300,000. I don't want anybody to think that. But we're talking anywhere from $25,000, $30,000 all the way up. And I think the public needs to understand the fluidity of special education, much more than anything else.
Yeah, so I've included that in my reports for all of you to see that that new student is going to be our fiscal responsibility as of July 1. And I know I shared that at the town meeting as well. And since that meeting, we actually also got another move-in who's in a day program, which is going to run us about 65K. So yeah, there's a very wide range depending on the need. But when they do move in, they are our responsibility to serve.
Thank you, Ashley. Mr. Owen?
Yeah, so to your final point, that 65K is not in this budget, correct?
It is not in the budget necessarily, but can be made up through attrition, if you will, right? So we do have a couple of students that are graduating and/or aging out. So there is a little bit of a buffer that we can make sure that that student is going to be okay. The $375,000 one, that's the big one, which Deirdre referred to in covering in Circuit Breaker and then getting reimbursed in FY '26.
And just to, to close the gap on that, because that's the key point, right? So this was a student that moved into district. Part of that year was paid for by prior districts, so we now assume that responsibility in that through their time within the district. That's that large sum money in that.
Yes, and that student's only in, I think, 7th grade, and we'll have him until he's 22 years old.
Okay.
So that's math I can't do right now. I could, but I didn't.
Well, I don't think anyone has to do the math.
I don't want to do the math. That's a lot of money.
In, this budget, does, does this factor in any, I'll say, mid-year? We have a student that we are supporting with in-house services, but there is a, again, not to sound impersonal, a life event that they would have to go to an outpatient. There is no factoring in this, right? That's either ebb and flow of this budget.
Right, yeah, there's not really factoring of that in the budget. We did it pretty much to plan as to what we know in a couple that we're expecting that are out on a 45-day right now.
Yeah, okay.
But otherwise, we'll have to talk about using some other funds that we have through Circuit Breaker if we do have a surprise or students that do require outplacement.
But at this point, the budget, through the work that we did as, as a team and a district team, these students going to these buildings with these services and these needs, taking into consideration experience ratios for services or something else happening, but certainly not a move-in at $100,000.
So this is going to be a lengthy, a topic of conversation, but all of this information is concerning for me in the approach that we use paraprofessionals. I'll say eliminate the paraprofessional positions for the specialists, right? Because we have the need, Mr. Ward said it last week, that we got to prioritize students. I, I think we need to look at, as a committee, a different way to fund those, except for the six paraprofessionals, right? I can envision in the evaluation, there's going to be a number of one-to-ones that have to be factored in without question, that is based upon their IEP. So...
Those have already been factored in.
Yeah, so that, that's a little concerning in that approach, and we'll dive into that a little bit further. But getting those positions back, we did this nine years ago.
So, so I, I think we should jump into it now only because I, I think it, it does tie into what you're asking. So we currently have 74 paraprofessionals district-wide, give or take one or two. I quickly did my math, and math is not a strength from mine, of mine. So there are a couple of things that we're still working on in this budget because after our last school committee meeting, I went through with the leadership team and we did a preliminary placement of paras for the anticipated slots for next year, which included grade level and special education. So of those 74, a majority are placed in special education programming or with students, right? And because of the students moving from building to building, you're going to see the impact in the budget lines because those paras are going to have to move from one budget line, like for instance, middle school, to a different. So there is the, with the movement of students, there is movement of paras. But as of right now, we are in compliance with special education and grade level, all grade levels are supported by paraprofessionals. So there is a little bit more that we have to do because obviously, paraprofessionals and student move-ins and student-assigned para-needs are all things that are ongoing, right? And it's going to change significantly from now until June when we actually have a better idea as to what next year is really going to look like and what kids are going to be here.
So current census is 74 paras. Regardless of the naming or how the year is, 74 paras.
I believe so.
And in theory, this budget is built on 68 paras. Am I understanding this correctly? Because last week, we talked about this, the strategy for the math specialist was removing of six paraprofessionals. Am I correct, or am I not understanding something?
Without taking into account attrition, without taking into account...
Right, that's the big thing, yeah.
Straight, straight numbers-wise, yes, but that doesn't take into attrition. It doesn't take into a number of other factors. So the number of, as far as I can see, the number of paras is, is not changing. I thought it was 72. I didn't think, I didn't think it was 74.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have the anticipated list in front of us.
Yeah, I don't recall that.
Our, our goal is to, to have them all back. That's the goal.
But again, and again, maybe I misunderstood this, but my understanding is we were offsetting the math specialists that came out of the federal funding through the number of paras. And again, I misunderstood. If I did, please, someone just elaborate because I...
I think it's a straight across.
Yeah, it's not a straight across, yeah.
It's not straight to straight. Financially, it wouldn't be straight to straight because of the salary.
But that was just one aspect of it, right? So I just, as I said, I think overall, again, there was a message of para positions being eliminated. I have a concern with that. So, so, but I'm going to leave that as a bookmark item. It's something that we just need to drill into for that. Can you talk a little bit about the ELL compliance issue that we're trying to address here in the budget?
So I'll pass it over to Terry. You want to talk about the ELL piece?
Sure. Right now, we have 36 EL students, and we have two educators. And we are not providing the new guideline service requirement minutes. Well, guideline minutes, because DESI has not stated this is a mandate, but they have a guideline around service minutes based on their access scores. And we even in the past two weeks had new families join our district that are requiring at least some level of service. And so our EL teachers are stretched, especially the one that is covering grays and middle school and high school, to their, beyond their maximum capacity. They're, Marina, I just comment her on how many things she juggles. And she added, and one of our fellow students, one of our former English language learners is struggling in one of the classes. So as a part of our requirements for that, she is now providing additional time with that student to support them in their English class. And so every time there's little adjustments during progress monitoring, we have to find minutes. And so that tends to take minutes off of another area, or... Going between three buildings adds the transition time needed to pack up and park and get back in.
I'm sure you're all familiar, but just as a reminder, all students are not put together at multiple levels. So this is not a typical science classroom. There's some differentiation. So based upon where our students are, we then have to create schedules, and we can't do it anymore. We have to add a third teacher in order to make sure we conserve. It's no different than, than, you know, grids for special education. We have to ensure that we can meet the needs of our Level 1, Level 2, Level 3 students.
Questions? Mr. Burke?
Just a clarification. That's primarily one-to-one or small group learning?
Actually, we are doing push-in as they recommended. So we are pushing in for, there's a foundational level and a transitional level for EL students. So for transitional students, we are doing primarily push-in, which is supporting within ideally an English class or a history class because that's where a lot of the two, three words are and the language barriers are. History is one of the most difficult classes for our EL students because of all the common, the repetition of vocabulary that to us makes sense, but is hard when you're learning a new language. And then our foundational students are having a combination. So it's, it's supposed to be 45 minutes and 45 minutes type of idea over the course of your schedule. And so we're pulling out for some small group instruction, which is why we had to purchase the secondary curriculum and then pushing in as well. So giving both services because ideally, students are hearing English language from their peers and learning through that language acquisition. At the elementary level, we, they actually were moving toward a kindergarten and first grade being completely inclusion because those students and their peers are learning English at the same time that they are. But as soon as you hit that 4th grade level, we really need to have, and Liz now has three students that are building. We only had two at the beginning of the year. Three students that are building plus that progress monitoring student that requires support. And pushing into the classrooms is one level of it, but having time with Marina to, to work on steady skills and more finite language acquisition because you don't want to sit into, in a class and do CDC words with somebody while their peers are reading a novel. So...
Thank you. Questions from members? Hearing none. Open this up to the public in the area of special education. Questions? Sure. Yeah, if you could just say your name and to the podium for, like, thank you.
Let me make it easier. Deborah Petty, Town Administrator, Freetown.
Welcome.
I have a couple of questions. When I looked at the DESI report online, it says that our special needs students are actually down 23 students from last year's. They're 477 students.
Are you referring to the SIMS data?
Yeah, the data from DESI.
Right, October 1?
Yes.
Yeah. So October 1 data is only a snapshot of information, and it is from October 1. So back in October 1 of this year, I believe that we were at about 475-ish, maybe 474. However, at this point, we're at 486. So these are snapshots throughout the year as to where people are, or where our special education numbers are at the moment, October, March, and June. And it's not a true reflection of what our actual numbers are because we can only, we can only count active special education numbers in SIMS data. So if we have an initial IEP that's pending and has not been signed, and they're still in the process, they don't count as an active special education student receiving services since that student is not receiving services yet. Does that make sense?
It does, but I just, I, you know, I was greatly concerned last year when you projected the numbers to be in the 600s with a 25% increase. And then we had 491 students as of October 1 in the prior year. And then this year, the number's actually 477, according to DESI. And I get it, it's a snapshot, but we're always dealing with estimates. And now you're telling me it's 486 right now.
Currently, yeah.
But earlier, you were talking about numbers being in 577.
Well, no, so what I had said, that if we based it off of my interpretation last year, we would have been at 586 instead of 604. But then we would have had to take into account, which I said did not include move-outs because I can't predict who's leaving, right? 16 move-outs, 21 graduates, and 19 acceptances to other local high schools, which brought us down to 530. Currently, we're at 486, but including 40 out-of-district students, which is, brings us to 526. So if we look at our whole number, SIMS doesn't capture all of the students reserving, receiving services. Students in our building.
And I mean, because when I looked at the numbers last year, I mean, the history was, the numbers range between 460 and 495, right in there, very consistently in that amount, right? So I think that was why I had such a hard time grappling with the 600 number. Which, you know, we have 2,700 students, so we're saying that 30% of our student population is special needs. And I, and I did struggle with that, and so I still want to be clear. Currently, we're still at 486. We're nowhere near the 604 number. So I just want to comment on that. And you mentioned the comparison to 2017, about how many evaluations you have currently to 2017. Why are we using 2017? That's, that's six, seven years ago.
I understand that. I'm just looking at what they currently are now at 197. And when I was looking at my spreadsheet of evaluations by year that have been completed, I was like, wow, this is the number total that we did in 2017. So that's the only reason I was referencing it, just to say, look at the difference in the number of evaluations from 2017 to present. It's a significant increase.
And yet, the increase is still not there, right? Even though we're doing more evaluations, our total numbers are pretty consistent in the 477, 491.
Well, that's going to, that's all going to depend. So I mean, if we didn't have 20, 40, 56 students leave the district last year, then we would be in a much different place. We would be at around 600.
But I mean, the graduating students, you can account for those. You just chose not to.
Well, not necessarily, because I can't say that all 33 this year are going to graduate. Or same with the out-of-district. I can't say that all of, at this point right now, there are some that are, that may be on the, on the cusp of graduation.
Right, but you can get, you can get close. You can get close, right?
An estimate.
And we're in, we're in April. We're going to be in April. Students graduate in early June. You, you should have a sense of who's headed for graduation and who's not.
So last year, there were 20, which is really a small number when you look at the 60.
And I would assume that's similar this year. We talk about the out-of-district students, and we, it's disturbing to me, but we consistently talk about this one student that's $365,000 or whatever. And it, it does disturb me that we keep talking about that because we do get reimbursed at a rate of 75%. Is that correct? So the impact to the district is not 375 or $365,000.
Actually, it is because, the only reason I mean to interrupt because that's kind of what I pointed out. The only reason we're putting an in next year for 300, we won't be reimbursed till FY '26.
Correct, but you will be reimbursed, right?
Yes, in '26, you'll see that reduction.
And so we, and we've been carrying the same student, so it's just a... And so we, and we've been carrying the same student, so it's just a revolving thing.
No, we haven't. It's brand-new budget. Oh, it's brand-new debt. That's why.
Okay, but it is gonna be reimbursed. So to say that our whole budgets are gonna be disturbed because we brought this student in, I think you need to also.
That's not what we said there. That's unfair.
Yeah.
I just actually specifically said otherwise.
Just to give an example.
Right. I, I get it. I mean, I understand.
What happens and how fluid the budget is.
But I think it's important for you to also let people know that, that we reimburse at a rate of seventy-five percent of these costs.
In the following fiscal year.
Right, but you have the funds. I mean, they will be coming back to you. You will have to spend it and you will get it back.
In a year and a half.
But I think for the, just for purposes of clarification, that is true. And I get your point for, for the, the, the public hearing is on the FY twenty-five budget. So the planning and, and purpose, at least in the way we're approaching this, is for this fiscal year.
I understand that. I just think, I think, like I said, this has been discussed at length a couple of times and it's, it's, it's something that I think it is what it is. We know we have to fund this.
Right.
There's no question about it. So I, like I said, I think it bothers me that we spend so much time discussing this one student and, and at that rate.
Well, I think it's just educating the public that a student like that with that level of need can move in and we assume responsibility for that.
And now, is that student, are we currently paying for that student?
Not yet, no. As of July first.
July first.
Because the previous district he's moving in from is fiscally responsible under the law.
I understand that. I just didn't know. I know we talked about it, so I didn't know if it was currently here, if that had moved into this district or was projecting to move in. Are we currently in compliance with special needs?
Yes.
That's it. Really, that was all of my questions that I have.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public in the area of special education? Ms. Barrett?
Yes.
Welcome.
Sherri Barrett, Lakeville. Nice to be on this side of the table. However, I remember sitting on that side of the table and I'm a little bit confused maybe. I'm not hearing well. It's hard to hear in the back. Mr. Owen and Mrs. Belay had a situation last meeting about the pairs. And there were gonna be six, a mix of different ones. Did I just hear now that those six, or at least that the grade level pairs are going to be retained for next year? Is that what I just heard?
So what you heard is that grade level, grade levels will be covered by paraprofessionals and special education is in compliance as of right now with grade level assignments for next year. So I think the confusion here, which is very hard to explain, is that we have three retirees and I believe there were two one-year positions. So of that, looking at, at people that are actually leaving, we are filling with what we currently have, if that makes sense. I don't know a better way to explain it.
We're not backfilling.
Correct.
Attrition is what you're saying.
Attrition, which is what I said. Correct.
So what I'm just trying to make sure of, for nine years now, we have been working on putting paraprofessionals in every kindergarten and one in each grade level. And actually, Dr. Solomon, I agree with you. We should be this year, as we hope that we could have put two more in for fourth and fifth grade.
As part of the budget, we are looking at supporting grades. However, we also have to look at this from a district-wide perspective and how to best support our classrooms and our special ed students with the resources that we have. So a lot of this is still in the works.
I'm talking about pairs. So when you say supporting grades, are you talking about supporting grade but junior?
I'm talking about district support. Paraprofessionals have been looked at by the leadership team, myself, Alan, and Terry, and we have looked at the, the needs for the district, both at grade level and special ed. And as of right now, we are working with what we have through attrition.
All I will say to my fellow school committee folks is that we know that the sooner that we get kids from kindergarten to grade three, four, and five, and we give them as much help as we can, we can lower our special ed numbers. So by cutting grade level pairs will put us in a situation perhaps, a couple of years from now, where our, where our spend numbers are going to go up. They are vitally, that's your appointment, that's your word, Mr. Strauss. They are vitally important, especially at the elementary level.
I don't disagree that they're, they're not vitally important. I have a very deep understanding for, and passion for paraprofessionals and I don't think that special education or general education could function without their support. However, we are currently staffing all grade levels at the elementary school with paraprofessionals and our value, initial evaluation referrals are through the roof. So I disagree with you there. It's not making a difference on the number of evaluation referrals that we're seeing in the level of supports that students are needing.
And I would say to you what we have said over the last few years, that COVID has been a lot of our problem.
I know, but we can't blame COVID for.
We'll have to agree to disagree, but I would ask the committee to seriously retaining those paraprofessionals kindergarten through at least grade three and at some point putting two more in on our fourth and fifth grade. Maybe not this year, but keep it on your radar, please.
Thank you, Ms. Barrett. Any other public comments in the area of special ed?
Hi, Leah Fabian, Select Board Member for the town of Lakeville. So I know what I'm looking at is the copy that we received initially of the budget from February seventeenth, maybe?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, okay. Valentine's Day. Yes, that's right. I remember thinking you had a meeting that day. Is the budget on the website? Because I can't find it. If someone can give me a sheet to get to it. For the proposed budget?
Are you talking about the new assessment, Leah?
I'm talking about the assessment and the new twenty twenty-five proposed budget.
No.
Because I know our proposed budget for twenty twenty-five is right there. People can go in and see what we look at, at our own meetings, so.
The detail or just the PowerPoint?
Presentation.
It's the PowerPoint, the assessment, but not the detail.
Okay.
Because.
The PowerPoint's on there.
But the assessment is not.
As a separate document?
The newest assessment is not.
No, the detail. They're looking for the actual physical detail.
Okay, well, so I'll ask my question anyway. So I was, it just goes to the fact I was trying to research this for myself and I couldn't find it. Could be me, whatever. But anyways, so. I was very stressed out one weekend when I received a phone call from a family who said to me, you know, you can't deny, you know, things for special education. And I said, pardon me? I haven't denied anything. I don't deny individually as a select board member or a board. We don't deny special education requests. So I think it's an oversimplification if someone is telling parents that the select board can deny special education requests. And that is really quite disturbing because, first of all, we give you the entire new levy every year. I mean, that's the two and a half percent. The town has to function. More than fifty-one percent of our entire Lakeville budget goes to the schools, as many of us think it should. However, we still have a town to function and we also still go to town meetings. So we can all present whatever we want at town meeting. Town meeting may say no. So I think it's really just a little disingenuous and actually quite stressful for me when somebody says to me as a select board member, please don't deny the special education budget. And I asked them where they heard that and they told me. And it came from someone, you know, from, from one of the school staff, not a school committee person. So I would appreciate that no one oversimplified the process. I would really appreciate that someone actually explained that, you know, no, none of us individually can do anything. Now, as far as that's concerned, this person was told that they couldn't get a teacher, a special education teacher at the school that their child was going into. I don't know if that's changed or not, but I would, I don't see a new special education teacher at that school. So I'm not, I'm not denying that. It's not in your budget, at least whatever copy I saw. So, you know, there's definitely either miscommunication coming from the special education department or, you know, something. So, you know, we're not the bad guy here. We're giving you the entire two and a half percent, so.
And I think I'm a little bit concerned because I'm taking that as like a directive to me as being the one that had communicated this, which I take a little personal because I understand that we come to these meetings and advocate to all the townsfolk as what we need, what we're looking at, what the numbers look like. I mean, that's my job to advocate, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it's the school committee that votes the budget, right? So, and special education is through compliance. So if we really need something, that takes priority over everything else, which again, is not fair to general education and principal and building needs, but unfortunately, that's how it is. So I don't know if maybe it was misinterpreted by someone. I don't know who said that. But I mean, ultimately, it comes down to this. And we are advocating for additional staff, however, it is through attrition in the district. So like I said, level services, we are looking to change up a couple of things, but it's through attrition in the budget. So it's already existing resources that we have.
All I can say is what I was told on a Sunday afternoon and I just want every. I'm sorry?
Did you have them call us?
They've had many conversations with, with a lot of people, so. And, you know, they, and I don't want to talk individually about anyone as I agree with Deb Petty, even, you know, the, this, I really don't like seeing, hearing, you know, more individual. We even now know that the three hundred thousand dollar person is a he. So I, I mean, to me, that's just, you know, disturbing, you know. But anyways, so if I, I wish I could find the actual proposed budget. It would have been helpful. But like I said, we, we put everything out there for people. And then I do have one just question in general, as long as I'm here because I don't really want to stand up again. But you said you're voting on the budget tonight? Because I know the agenda didn't say vote on it.
That is correct. We are voting.
So you can vote without it? I know we never vote anything unless it says vote. That's sort of a.
Point taken.
But anyways, I was just surprised when I heard that there was going to be a vote because it wasn't specified on the agenda. I.
That's a good point.
She's right. So.
And I appreciate your comments on the individual. It's hard to address that given the vagueness, but I'd love to have a conversation with you offline on that. But I, I would certainly.
I'm willing.
Believe the sentiments of this committee would be opposite of that. And I know Ashley and her staff through special education, that's not a message that, that would certainly come out this way. So it's, it's tough to adjust in that setting, so it's unfortunate that you feel that way. Mr. Owen, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to, I know for the length of time that I've been on this board, there hasn't ever been a contentious conversation between the school boards and the towns where the towns were not supportive. You know, there were questions and gone through that. So just to counter that point, it, you guys have been very responsive into that, especially with that, even when we were at an E and D of eighty thousand dollars because we had to spend some, to cover some special education costs, there was a collaboration of, hey, in that same situation, we need to come to the towns to figure out how we do that. So to contrary to that point, I think from the school board itself, it's never been, I can't say never, I just say on the time that I've been here, nothing but support from both Freetown and Lakeville, especially when it comes to special education.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
It's one of the matter of the vote. We should, it is not noted on the agenda.
It'll have to be tabled until the next meeting.
It will have to be tabled. Sorry, Deidre. But let's also make it clear that if we were to vote, we're voting a ceiling.
Right.
Can only go down. That's what the vote would have been, had it been properly noted on the agenda. Apologies.
Any other comments in the area of special education? Hearing none. We move to Mr. Goodwin.
How do I follow that up?
It's tough, but.
I guess so. This was an experience this year for me with the budget. Had a very big hands-on approach as far as diving into the budget. I was supported through it with the central office staff. My team, I talked their ears off about it. And Jen Scully, she was great. She sat down, went line for line through this whole budget. It helped me to understand it more. A lot of times, you know, we spend money and we have line items and we look at things. We wonder where it's coming from, how it's classified. This year, we get to really, I get to see, you know, how it was used. So that helped to see where some of the funds were being spent and where maybe the lines should be moved and adjusted. So that being said, as you can see, you know, this is a moderate increase across most of the budget here and there. And I won't get too deep on what I have to say. I'll just let you guys ask questions because I figure I'm probably better off to answer than to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin.
Feel free.
Questions from the committee? Mr. Owen?
I expected this.
In this budget, can you talk to any, a column of the annual maintenance projects that are included in here, right? So there's oftentimes, there's a replacement of this floor, it's replacement of carpet at an elementary school. Any of those projects built into this budget?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Because most of what's in this budget, actually all of what's in this budget, if you look at maintenance of building, at those accounts, those lines that are in there, a lot of those things are absorbed into maintenance of building. We haven't built any big projects per se into that. You won't see that, I don't believe, reflected in this. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. But it's basic, the cost of doing business. This budget that you have before you is what it's costing to operate your buildings with this budget. You know, and basic repairs if things come up. Little bit of painting, some floor repair if necessary. But as far as big things planned out in this budget, no.
I don't know if this is the spot to ask this, but in prior years, the fire doors at Aponequit was a cause of heartburn.
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Okay, so is this being addressed anywhere in this budget?
It is. Sorry to speak on this. It's, it's not addressed in this budget. So how do I want to say it? Well, put no. The cart before the horse, I guess, in some conversations because I hear these things come up and we've got our capital planning, we've got our master planning. We've got all these things moving right now. So as far as from the way that I view it with everything, there hasn't been any substantial planning on that because we've kind of been waiting to see what comes out of these capital plans and these master plan meetings and what's happening. Because there's a lot of moving pieces up to this point. So there's no funding really been brought forward for it or any discussion that I, that I can see at this point on it until we actually have, I believe there's a door study that's been spoke of to do a fire door study to see. Because these doors aren't just a matter of replacing door for door. You've got structural work that'll need to be done on, on the casements of the doors and stuff potentially. So it's not just like, oh, we're gonna have somebody come in and replace fire doors. So to your point, I don't, this, it's not built into this budget. And Deidre can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that that's in here. So to your point, no.
So this has been brought up over the last few years, especially when we opened up schools. The big issue is the fire doors at the high school. So.
So let me, let me jump in here.
Okay.
I am aware of the conversations regarding fire doors at the high school. And the first things I address with Steve Habib is the fire doors at the high school and the fire panel over at Freetown. With respect to the fire doors at the high school, there is a outstanding carry-forward purchase order for engineering study on the fire doors at the high school that I asked Steve Habib to do during his walkthrough of existing conditions in his building, in these buildings. I am waiting for that report from Steve. And I said to Steve, and I've said to Greg, find me the two, three worst fire doors at the high school. Get me a purchase order. That should take care of something if we can get started with some of them along the way.
So.
So that's not in here. It's a carryover waiting to. Remember when I told you I was reducing all of those carryover purchase orders because of supply chain issues? This is like the last one still sitting there.
Okay.
Because we've got the vans and everything else, but that one is still there for that purpose.
But Habib is also talking with the building inspector in Lakeville as by a chain?
No, not just yet. The discussion was when you do your evaluations of. The discussion was when you do your evaluations of existing conditions at the buildings, I would like you to take a particular interest, if you're walking with structural folks. I would like you to take a particular interest, and Greg and I also had this conversation, about any report you could possibly provide me on the fire doors that we could possibly start to replace, because I happen to have a carryover that can be used for this work.
Okay.
I just have to get my arms around, what is the existing conditions, how much does it cost? Yes, it's going to have some framing and things like that. Is it one door, two doors, three doors, or can I not do anything for that kind of money? That's what I'm looking to figure out from that.
Okay, and hopefully that conversation is sooner rather than later to bring in, because we, as a committee, hear about it every year, and it's something that we need to have agreement as far as what the plan is, you know, for the fire doors at the high school.
I would agree.
Right.
And speaking on the two, Mr. Owens, if you don't mind me speaking a little further on that. You bring up the fire doors, but even in-house, you know, as we do our fire drills and they come in and they check the buildings, we've made progress on the faulty doors, just in-house staff, between replacing things, adjusting things, working on them. So when they do our fire drills, we get a report on it, and we do still have those few doors that are in need of more work, but we have gained on it. So there is some progress on it as far as the fire department goes, and they let us know through conversation, every time they come in here, they give us a report on it, we touch base on it, and we are addressing the things that we can address in-house to make a difference on these doors here. I just wanted to put that out there, it's not that they're not being looked at.
I, I think that's better than nothing, right? There is progress, right? At the end of the day, we want to make sure that those parties, the, the building inspectors of both towns, the fire chiefs in both towns, that we're all on the same page, you know, when it comes to this overall. So I know that's been a sticking point.
Absolutely.
The, do we have a timeline of the capital subcommittee and what we're going to propose? Is this something that's not going to happen for this fiscal year? It's going to be more something that's brought up in the next fiscal year?
So the capital, there, you have, we're getting ahead of ourselves, but in your, in your packet was a survey that Habib wants to send out to the community. We don't send out surveys unless the school committee says it's okay. That then goes out, then the entire capital committee comes back to hear the findings of Habib and associates for all the walk, all the walkthroughs that they did, all of the information, projections, capacity of space, suggestions of where they see some, some issues within buildings. They present that to, to the capital committee and school committee. So once we do the survey, then we're going to start scheduling when Habib comes here and meets with school committee, and then when they meet with the capital committee.
So from an overall timing perspective-
It will be this year.
It will not be this year?
It will.
It will be this year.
The meeting will be this year, but a funding request or looking at what project we want will not be in conversation. Thank you.
Any other questions from members, or more questions?
Well, no, I, it's, it's the same one, I think we're going to refer Habib, you know what I mean? We have the, the red barn, which is, which is a four-sided building with a roof that is patchwork, right? So not so much the red barn, it's the amount of equipment that's in the red barn, so, you know, we do have, we have facility, athletic facilities that can't be used, which is extremely disappointing, because we have a sport that they can't even, based on MIA reg, can't even use that. So we need to get moving on those pieces.
Part of that issue is an irrigation issue, that, that needs to be fixed, which is expensive. So yes, absolutely, that's what we're in for.
Thank you for bringing up the irrigation, I was going to ask.
Yeah, no, so the irrigation, as you all know, irrigation since my time here has never been a complete irrigation system that's ever functioned in its whole entirety. We've brought it back year after year, in-house, worked on it, and we've gained on it. Last year, because of the design of our irrigation system, it draws off our fire suppression tank. And that's the design of this, there's a fitting inside, there's a booster pump. This is a very strange system, but that's what feeds this. The way the booster pump fits in there, the fitting has broken. Because of the regulations and changes on being able to repair, repair this, this is a 40,000 below ground storage tank, which is a confined space work, which has to have specialty oversight when they come in to do it. Just that job on that alone is $12,500, to have them come in, drain the tank, inspect the tank, because the tank needs to be inspected every five years now to get it up to code to the new standards. So going to a lot of those things, there are more layers than to just the irrigation's not working. There are the other pieces with it. If it was as simple as fixing a connection and making this work, it would have been done a year ago. But last year, when this let go, we can't go down that tank. I can't put a guy on a ladder and drop him in a 40,000 gallon tank and say, fix that fitting for me. So these are the things that changed that. Even after that, this irrigation system isn't still as a hundred percent. We've gained considerably on it, but we still have some deficiencies in this system to bring it up, which would have been the plan had that not happened to this tank right now, to spend that kind of money on it. It's, and we've got, we're going to get that fixed this year. That will be taken care of through maintenance of grounds. You don't see it reflected in here, because it's going to be out of the operating budget that I have right now currently in place. So we will have that tank up and running, and we'll bring the irrigation back up to the standard of what we can do in-house. We didn't lose any fields last year, we had a great amount of rain. And with our turf management program that we have in place, I don't feel that we've really got a big issue with the fields out there. I didn't hear of anything of, of a standpoint that we couldn't have a playoff game on our fields or anything like that. The only thing that came forward to me was our tennis courts, and we've worked on them as well, in-house. My guys were out there on their hands and knees pulling weeds and cleaning cracks, and then we researched a product specifically for tennis courts, and we patched them in-house. Four of the six courts are now patched and sealed. We have two left that were scheduled to start this week, but due to weather, we weren't going to get out there. We need temperatures to be maintained above 50 degrees. We discussed it with Coach Cabusio or AD, Mr. Cabusio, and we're actually going to put some paint down on the courts with the budget that I have in-house to make this more presentable. And he says that there's no reason, and they've been approved to play on this with a tournament game, if everything is the way that we speak. So we do have plans to fix those last two courts this spring, and to put a fresh coat of paint on there to make it somewhat presentable. So these things are being addressed in-house through the budget we have. That's why you don't see it reflected in a new budget. I also have contacted Cape and Islands Tennis Court and Track. They've come out, they've looked at our track so that we can get a price to re-line, repaint, so we don't lose the track with all the money that was just spent. The tennis courts are also in that. They're coming out, they're going to evaluate the tennis courts, and they're going to give us an assessment to see if it's a repairable item or if it's something that's going to need a replacement. So these things are being addressed, and it's just the timing for them to get out here with the change of the season to look at it.
So when the tennis courts were repaired eight years ago?
2016, I believe, is when we did it, am I right or wrong?
Three years.
Yeah.
Eight years ago. They said it would be about seven years, eight years. And they were not cheap when they were replaced, when, when they were resurfaced then. Price now is around $90,000. So, you know-
And that, that's just a repair, that's not a replace.
Yeah, that's not replacing, that's just repairing. And last year, the team could not play in the state tournament at home, which was an awful thing. So it's finding that $90,000. And, and so, you know, there are a number of places that we're going to look at this year. And we'll have conversations with the school committee moving forward for a one-time, you know, at least that a one-time funding source.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee on facilities? Mr. Berg?
Greg, do you feel your staff is where it needs to be moving forward?
No. I mean, we should have a whole nother conversation on that, but, so just to put it in perspective, because I, I like fun facts, and I put fun facts together. Just a, a square footage on our buildings, we have 615,210 square foot of buildings that we maintain and take care of. We have 197 acres of grounds that we take care of throughout the district, 136 of which sit right here on this campus. We have three men. So if you ask me if I feel that I'm staffed moving forward, I am not adequately staffed to handle everything that comes at us. You know, I'm not complaining about it. I have great staff, they work very hard, and they do a great job. And the things that they do out there, athletics weighs on our department heavily, because it requires so much time. And for the time that puts in on athletics and sports fields, it takes away from the buildings. So there's a balance that we have to have, that really, at the end of the day, there's really two guys out there that are muscling it all up, you know? So if those could, those things could change in the future, that would be fantastic, because I think the district deserves it. And that would be a really good place to start. Even one person a year would be a great addition to that staff.
Finding people is another piece.
Pardon?
Finding people.
Yeah, I mean, it's a whole, it's a whole process. I mean, we can't even, it's hard just to hire a part-time custodian or a full-time custodian, even to find somebody with any skills. I mean, to find a person that actually has a skill set that you can use out there is very hard these days. I mean, people don't, they don't apprentice anymore. You don't teach them things that they can learn and take with them. When I came up through the industry, somebody took the time to teach me how to run a backhoe, how to turn a wrench, read, read a torque wrench, you know, use micrometers, all these things to become who I am today. That doesn't work anymore. People just want to come to work without a skill set, and it's hard in this setting to take that time to pass that knowledge along, because this is a, boots on the ground and you're running fast to get there, you know?
Similar to bus drivers, you can't find anything.
Nope.
Thank you, Greg.
Other questions from the committee? Questions from the public in the area of facilities? Please take the podium, thanks.
Here's the camera, Lakeville taxpayer. Not a selectman anymore. Couple of things, certainly disappointed that the budget was not out on the website to look at. This deal, these public, these people come to the meeting, and we don't have anything to look at to ask the questions. So I think that's a major disappointment, and I think the budget ought to be put out there right away. As far as the facilities are concerned, if, if the school committee recalls, last year, we talked about, it was Ursa one or Ursa two funding, and I, I don't remember which one it is, I get confused, but I think it was Ursa two, that there was money that was allocated, you know, to the, the district. And what we talked about doing was allocating some of that money for the region, for Free Town Elementary, and for Assawamset School. And one of the things that was on that list was a new generator for Assawamset. So I don't know what, where that stands, you know, as far as the generator is concerned. I don't know what was going on in Free Town. But I understand it was spending a significant amount of money to, to rent a generator currently right now. I don't know what the cost is, Greg, on that.
Probably about twelve, roughly maybe $12,000 a year.
So where that money go?
I think the discussion, if I may, the discussion at the point where at least I came in, was the double spending of S R money, not only in the area of that generator, but in the area of H V A C deficiencies, which we had been reported to by train. So we couldn't do both, well, what are we going to do? And then that conversation continued, and we're not finalized with that conversation yet, because we have to figure out the S R three money, actually, it's available now, and what those requirements are to do with that funding at that, at this particular point. So it was on the table at one particular point, but not moved forward because of spending it twice, is what we kind of decided, we kind of came down to. Because we had the H V A C deficiencies and the COVID money out of Washington, was focused on indoor air quality and H V A C efficiencies, particularly in our elementary school. We quite frankly thought it's town building, it's a World War II generator, $200,000 on a building. Should I put in H V A C or wait for a generator? To wait for the generator, for the building to go down, and it only will support the exit signs and not even the freezer anymore, because you have asbestos in your freezer. So those were the conversations we were all having the time. Here's the amount of money we have, here are the needs, what is the priority? And what is the best bang for that entire building, particularly around H V A C? So I think that that's where we had that.
There's only one problem, we didn't communicate anything to the town about that, of what was going on.
Have we had a conversation?
So we, we agreed at this meeting, the school committee meeting, that that's what we're going to do. We're going to allocate the funds, the amount of money that was going to Assawamset, Free Town, and the region. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but, you know. So it's disappointing that the monies, I don't know where the monies went or what it's been used for, but it was specifically discussed for that purpose, because we knew we had a problem with the generators that needed to be replaced.
We can still definitely take a look at that. Again, it was just a, a thought process I had had, taking a look at multiple spending of the same money, and then including, you know, a special education deficit. So I wasn't really ready to spend any money on anything until there was more further understanding in the district by myself, the changeover in personnel, the facilities manager, who's spending what money? And I was spending it twice. So that's all I-
I, I don't think there's any question of spending it twice. It was decided by the school committee.
Okay.
They voted on it, you know, to do that for both towns in the region. So on your own, you decided to change that on your own, without discussing with the school committee?
It's not finalized at this particular-
But that was last year.
There's, the capital plan that was voted by the school committee hasn't been re-looked at by the school committee.
This was done last year with Ursa money, not this year, and not coming forward.
I, I think just from my own recall, I, I don't recall that, but I think-
I can get you the documentation, it's in, it's in last year's budget.
I think we can get it, but I-
It's in the budget.
I think the idea, let us get it, and then we can certainly communicate it. Your point's taken on the communication, but why don't we look into that?
Absolutely, absolutely. I can give you all the paperwork I found, and then the discussions at the time, and why people were spending the money twice.
Yeah.
I don't know who decided twice, but anyways. The other question is that the, the boiler at Assawamset is very, very old. It is already gone, it's already gone down, you know, once. In the last year's budget, we talked about, you know, putting in the boiler. I think the number was 300,000, Greg, if I remember correctly, I don't remember the number.
I don't have that number in mind.
But anyways, did the region file for the accelerated MSBA program this year for the boiler?
No, they did not.
How come?
How come?
Yeah.
I don't have an answer for you that, on that side.
Well, here we have, we have potentially have a serious problem at the Assawamset School, that you could have gotten 50% reimbursement if you applied to the, to the accelerated program. Right?
From my understanding, they opened up the accelerated repair in January, and we did not apply for an accelerated repair project, as we are in the motion in mode of capital planning with our house doctor evaluating all existing conditions in the district, and prioritizing those existing conditions from a capital perspective. Then that capital planning and that master planning that was also way underway before I got here, that's presented to the capital planning, we've discussed it at each school committee member, and they decide how to move the capital planning in priority order by the district on all schools.
Hey, we discussed it last year.
I beg your pardon?
We discussed the boiler last year, and last year-
I wasn't here when you discussed the boiler.
I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, you lost the opportunity to get a significant reimbursement for replacing that boiler. And we didn't do it.
Did the town do it, your building?
No, the regional, the regional school committee is responsible to do it. The business manager is responsible to do it.
I did not do that, because we were in the middle of capital planning and we were assessing-
But you never told the town, so nobody told the town what was going on, you know, about the boiler.
On, on the boilers, right? Even this year with the MSBA, they're not supporting replacing boilers.
They are.
They're all going green.
They are, they are, which is green, the boiler's green.
But just so to your point, the boiler went down because of a linkage that came off the boiler. The boilers have not failed this year, any major, any major failures. We haven't had any trouble with the boilers. It's not the point, you said the boilers have been going down, and I'm, I'm just bringing it to 1988. I said that prior in this conversation to you. But you're making it sound like they're falling out of the building, which isn't the case. Are they old, yes, they are, and they're operational.
If that boiler goes down, the school-
I'm not going to pick a fight with you, sir.
You're going to close the school. You know, it's a, it's a serious problem that needs to be addressed, and it's going to door.
Yeah, come on. We'll certainly look into that. And we will communicate that.
The performance bond program that was done here at the region, the train.
Greg, can you speak to him about the train project? Greg, can you speak to him about the train project?
Yeah, the train project, you know, which is completed now, I believe.
It is.
Right? Is the, um, the reduction in energy costs offsetting the cost that we spent on the train project?
That's not an answer that I can provide for you. That'll have to come from the director of finance office.
Why?
Because you have the information for that.
So let me try to answer that.
It's not my place to answer that. I'm not the director of finance and you've got those information like.
But I, I think, I think this is also something that we could work on and, and get that information to you, Rich. Any additional follow-up questions? So we have a list that we'll get back to you and communicate.
No, I have other questions on other parts of the budget.
Okay. Well, let's wrap up facilities. Any other public questions about facilities?
Yes, Leah Fabian, again, Select Board from Lakeville. Steve, I don't want to speak for you, but it seems to be. Sorry, Steve. It seems to me that you're asking like capital related questions when you're asking everybody is, you know, this in this part of a budget. It almost feels like you're asking for a capital plan. Am I correct?
Well, that, that's what's coming out of it. So typically in the budget in prior years, there would be smaller projects that are built in, whether it's replacement of carpets or in, with tile, what have you. So those are, that's why I've asked the question about what is in there. We are having that capital subcommittee to come back with a strategy, right?
Yeah.
Um, you know, as we look in here, we do have a capital plan and the boiler at AES is, is year three, 25, 26, right? So, um, but that, that's why I asked the capital, what is embedded in here?
And, and I, I guess what I just want to do is just follow up to what you're asking and the capital plan because we, you know, if we don't know, we don't know.
Yep.
And we are responsible for Assawamset and, you know, like Mr. LaCamber said, if, you know, I, I mean, I have to say, the doors and windows at Assawamset are amazing. It's beautiful. We walked through it. I happened to be there when Greg was there. We walked through it, the additional work that, you know, he supervised. Amazing job. I mean, I, I can't say enough good things, Greg. I, I am like, so just, that's the good part of this job when you feel like you've been part of some really, really good work. And I do think going forward, if we can be more, you know, have more communication, maybe we can do, you know, more projects like that. And you know what? Right now, we have an interim town administrator. We're looking to hire, you know, we've had inconsistency, but there's some of us still that are really trying hard every day to bring forward this great work. And I would love to be a part of another, you know, whether it's a new boiler or something else, just, you know, so as soon as you guys have the capital plan, you know, just.
Just to confirm, there is.
I'm sorry, the 15, this, the section 15 in your book is the last voted capital plan of the school committee, which was done last year that hasn't been addressed, has kind of been put on this for a couple of different reasons, but because we've got master planning going on, that we've hired the consultant for $200,000 to start working on this capital list tied into the existing conditions, put it out on priority. And if you can get it into MSBA, great, but that'll be a next round and you can include a couple of different things on here in that. It'll go together.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying that I know in the schools, in the selectmen's office, there's been, you know, folks have come and that's just life. That's just the way, you know, people come, people go, but some of us have been here for a long time. I'm in my 10th year of service to the town and I, I mean, it was phenomenal walking through the school and seeing that project and the additional work that, you know, clearing the courtyards. It, it really, really, truly was one of the nicest things I've gotten to participate in, you know, and I'm starting, like I said, my 10th year of service to the town. And those are the kinds of things that, you know, we don't want to fall through the cracks. So, you know, I'm around for at least another year. So, um, I look forward to trying to bring some of those, but again, kudos to everybody. I know Kara, starting from Kara, who initiated the doors and windows project when she was still here to, you know, the superintendent and everybody else. And, you know, it's phenomenal, really beautiful. And Greg, I, I mean, the additional work that you've done, it, it just was so, so satisfying and just a pleasure to see. And I know you still have some punch list items and I'm better, I'm glad that's you, not me.
Just to close out the topic, um, we do have town representation on that subcommittee, correct?
Capital?
Yes.
Which is the communication.
I'm sorry, one more time? I believe it's Nate Darling who's on it from.
Yes, both building planners.
The planning guy.
Yes, from both towns.
So Greg, thank you for stretching the resources that we provide and, and through the towns. You always make decisions about safety and, and always positive, like Ashley and Ryan and all the departments in each of the site, sites about making decisions positively for kids, really saying no, if it ever. So I, I appreciate that, Greg. So that concludes the, the sites as well as the departments. I would open it up to members for general comments or questions about the overall FY25 budget at this time. Mr. Owen.
Technology question. The ticketing system, uh, over years past, it's always been that we had a very large ticketing queue. Is that manageable with the staff that you have today?
Yes, uh, I have a phenomenal staff.
Okay.
So in most instances, I don't think a ticket doesn't usually, won't last more than 24 hours.
Okay.
So stuff comes in, like Pam, for example, the middle school put a ticket in, within an hour, they're going down, they look at the device and either fix it or shut it off.
I said this, technology is a, is a great opportunity to hire a population that is looking for jobs and probably know more about technology than 90% of the people sitting in this room. So high school students is an avenue that we should look at as, as they can do a number of these tasks, they can assist with that. I'm not sure if that's even something that can be done from a, a facilities, a maintenance perspective, right? So I know growing up, we always had those pieces and I don't know if that's a faux pas today, but that should be done there. I'll take it one step further. Lot of commuter, uh, computer science fields out there. So an internship at the high school would probably go a long way as well as help the overall department with getting through that. Cause I know there's a lot of great work that has to be done over the summer, right? To get ready for the next school year, but something to, to, to look into there.
Any other questions from the members? Questions from the public on the overall budget?
Um, Margaret Trench, Freetown Finance. Um, this is from central office budget because we didn't talk about that one. At the joint meeting, we talked about the, um, overage on the salary for clerical school committee and you said it was one-time stipends. Um, but there's an increase of 40,000, oh, 35,000 this year.
Yes. So that position in FY25, the $40,000 is the $5,000 for the secretary at the committee meeting, Terry, in this case, Renee.
Yeah.
And the $35,000 is for a new central office staff member. That's going to be a floating secretary that we're going to put in the central office to train on SIMs, building security. We're going to use him or her as a floating secretary to cover vacations, to cover, um, holidays and/or any time off, sick time, I, I meant to say. That person will get to know the district, get to know the sub, the, the sites. We also have two retirements coming up in the central office at the same time and we don't want to go through business office transitions again. So the thought was because we were spending money on salaries for subs and we have the need in two years, why don't we bring people in? They can do some subbing across the district. They can get started on training, on requisition processing, SIMs data, attendance data. We're going to move potentially, discussion still at hand, preschool enrollment and, and signing up to the central office because you collect the money too. So that might make sense too, from an efficiency standpoint. But when we hire that person, that person's being shifted into business office. I put it there to highlight the position as a school committee position that they were thinking of. That's why I put it in that line item, the 35,000. But if that person is hired, that 35,000 is going to go half into business and half into HR because we report it that way.
Okay.
But that's the purpose and the thinking for future sustainability. We've got retirement planning. We just want to pick some stuff up and get that rolling.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. LaCamber.
Yeah, Rich LaCamber, Lakeville. You talked about earlier, the assessment sheet, uh, that you're using, uh, school choice money, uh, to balance the budget. How much money is designated right now in school choice before you get a reimbursement this coming year?
Whoops, hold on. So you're looking for the uncommitted fund balance after we use this.
No, you're going to get another reimbursement this coming July 1. Right? $320,000 according to the state.
We are anticipating $320,000 coming in if all students enroll in September. Cause the school committee just declared 10 slots open, so that's 50,000. All 10 students have to show up. That may, might not. So that's a revenue source that's not definitely coming in. Most likely it will, but it depends on the number of heads that show up in September, sir.
I'm talking about the state aid. The governor's budget says there's $320,000 that's going to be given to the region for school choice.
Correct.
Right?
If we get it all, we're happy.
I'm not talking about what's happening in the future because that's always in the rear's.
Okay.
Right?
What's always in the rear's?
The school choice.
That circuit breaker that's in the rear. Circuit breaker is a reimbursement program.
I understand. I understand.
Okay.
Okay? So answer my question, how much is in school choice right now?
School choice right now has available to the school committee, subject to appropriation, after putting this down, $500,000. That's remaining, subject to appropriation after the school committee. If anything else comes up after this. Those are one-time monies that you'll have left after you pay this down.
So as of right now, without the budget, there's 800 plus thousand dollars.
Correct.
School choice.
Right.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
After they vote, there'll be five hundred.
Okay. So it's 800 plus thousand dollars altogether. Right?
Right now, but when you take this money out.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay?
You're doing the math correctly, yes.
Okay. The second question has to do with the circuit breaker money. Um, the circuit breaker money, um, is, how much money is, is left in the circuit breaker account?
$750,000 after you do this move.
Okay. So going to get reimbursement from the state for circuit breaker money, right?
I'm already budgeting that.
Just asking the question, ma'am. I'm sorry. I'm sorry if I'm aggravating you, but I'd like to understand the numbers.
Okay.
Okay? So how much is this, how much are we going to get from the state for, according to the governor's budget?
For what? Circuit breaker or school?
Circuit breaker money.
We are getting $1,236,050 and that's guaranteed as long as they're not 9C cuts. That's not dependent on enrollment. That's guaranteed.
I understand. So besides that, you're taking 300,000?
Correct.
And so the current balance you said is what? The current balance of circuit breaker money.
The current balance of fund, of circuit breaker?
Funding.
After you do this?
No, I'm talking about before.
All right. So then after you do this, it's 750 and then I'll add back the 300. So that's a million five.
So there's a million, million five?
Right.
Wow. That's a lot of money.
So I'm going to, a million oh five oh, thank you.
Okay.
So we're going to use 300 and then we're going to have 750, subject to appropriation by the school committee that they can still use so that we can cover the gap for our level services budget.
And by the way, I agree with Deb and Leah, it's inappropriate to talk about a student. You, you told him it was a male. You said he was in the seventh grade and to talk about that it's going to cost the region $375,000 is inappropriate to do that. I mean, you should never talk about a student, an individual student like that. The last question that I have is the E and D. What's the certified E and D right now?
Certified E and D, sir, is 1 million. Hold on. Hold on, sir. Let me just look through my documents.
Yeah, you have, take all the time you want.
Thank you. So we submitted it at 1,909,000 and they deducted 132,500 for a grant summer salary. So it came in at about 1,170,000. But we're looking for that 132,500 back through audit.
Okay.
But it has been certified at 1.7 million dollars.
So you have 1.7 million dollars in E and D.
E and D.
And not using any of that money?
Correct.
For the budget at all?
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
You got a million dollars in?
Fund balance.
Circuit breaker money.
Fund balance, yes.
Right?
Correct.
You got, I forgot the number, 800,000, 900,000?
750,000 in school choice fund balance.
Okay.
Correct.
So you're sitting there with over $2 million, right? At least two million, more than $2 million.
Correct.
Right? So the town, I can speak for the town of Lakeville because I've seen their budget. They are struggling to keep and maintaining their budget and you have all of these reserve files.
I'm sorry, can you speak to the school committee, please, instead of just want to be right in here?
I'm sorry, I'm asking a question. Ask whatever question you want. So you have all this money available, you know, and the town's a struggle. I can't speak for Freetown, okay? But I can tell you the town of Lakeville is struggling. You know, they're reducing things and so forth and so on. So now you come back with a budget that there's no cuts at all in your budget based upon what you said tonight. Is that correct? Is that correct, Mr. Superintendent?
The level services are great.
Okay, it's level services. Thanks for your feedback. Um, any other public comments? And, and I think the takeaway is the budget will be posted next year. Many of your questions were numbers related, so I, I think that makes sense. Then we'll do a better job of that.
Just to confirm, we're, we're going to post the budget.
Correct.
This week, not like wait till next year.
Again, yes, so that's a good clarification. But for the process and public hearing next year, it'll be posted in time. So any other public comments? Okay, motion to close the public hearing for the FY25 budget. Do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, no?
Hold on, we have a discussion.
Discussion.
Is this happening again in two weeks? Or is this all done, a discussion about?
This is, the public hearing is, this will close the public hearing on the FY25.
Next week will be the vote.
Okay. And is there going to be any discussion before that vote, or are you just voting?
There's always discussion.
There's always discussion.
Okay, okay.
With anything, right? So if there's public participation is another avenue that they can do, right?
Right.
Right.
But I would suspect there's ongoing conversation, right? Just to close a loop, I support this as a ceiling. There's still a lot of work that needs to be done. There's still a lot of work on whether we want to move forward with different positions, right, that we're proposing. So I would look at this that there's going to be movement in and around, and I know you're tracking this as far as what the different pieces are, but there are avenues that we definitely need to look at. Guidance councils is one area, right? So, you know, there may be different pieces in here. Historically, this committee has, you know, if we look at class size, you know, that is. So I am supportive of this being the ceiling, right? So we're not going back for more, but it's more of an opportunity if this comes down, as it will because of the 54,000 that's coming out, right? So I think those are different
But you've thrown in 125 with your property in casualty.
And those are the ebb and flows that we need to look at in that, right?
Exactly.
So this is going to go through its normal process here that was, I hope it continues that normal process that all the way up until the budget's released last business day in June, right, that we need to work through that and potentially revote after another vote.
But I do think it's important for everybody to understand, we can't vote the budget tonight, but the budget being voted will be the ceiling. We can't add anything to it after the budget's voted by the school committee. So that's just an FYI.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I do want to make a comment, Rich, that we sat down with Bob Nunes, and he was very clear to me and Terry and Deb as well as to where he needed us to be. Very clear. And Deb sat in that meeting. Had he said something else, we'd be in a different place. So to simply say we are being, I didn't even use that term, so that's unfair. We went by what we were told. Last year, we were given very little. There was less communication. We had a very long meeting with Deb and Bob as to what was the number we needed to get to. I didn't get, I didn't get the feel that you needed to go below that when I gave him the numbers, when I gave Deb the numbers. It was very much, okay, we're okay. That's where we need to be. I'm not questioning you, and certainly there does need to be paring down. I'm not questioning that. But I think to assume that we just were willy-nilly with this and came up with this number, we went by what the towns told us.
Thank you. So the motion on the table, no, there's a motion on the table to close the public hearing piece. So the motion on the table is to close the public hearing on the FY '25 budget. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The motion carries on the closing of the public hearing. Number, moving on to number five on the agenda, which is the acceptance of the minutes for the March 13 meeting. Discussion. I'll make a motion.
Number six. Instead of motion, it says more in. But other than that?
Yep. Renee can fix that. So on the acceptance of the minutes for the 3:13 meeting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Any abstentions?
No.
Motion to accept the executive session minutes for the same date, March 13. Discussion. Do I hear a motion?
Owen, motion.
We have a second. Ms. Fox, a motion from Mr. Owen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion. Oh, any abstentions? I'm sorry, Mr. Clark. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Number six, old business. We have A, FY '24 budget update will come from?
I don't have one this evening. I apologize, but I do have the one. So I will update the committee at the next meeting prior to the vote on the budget.
Okay, we will table section A.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have B, item B, which is the Student Opportunities Act. A vote is required. Ms. Fleming, at the last meeting, provided an update on that. Any further updates? We're just moving?
Do you have the narrative on it in front of you?
Somewhere.
But, yeah. I think honestly, if you go to section five, in the bottom, it talks about the focus areas, just as we talked about last, or two weeks ago. Our primary focus areas will be promoting students' physical and mental health and wellness, welcoming and affirming in safe spaces, reimagining the high school experience so that all students are engaging and prepared for post-secondary success, and selecting and skillfully implementing high-quality, engaging instructional materials that support culturally and linguistically sustaining practices and foster deeper learning. Those are the three focus areas. Down below that are the what and hows in those paragraphs. As we talked about, increasing student voice and creating positive school environments that reflect places that the students are looking to be a part of. That's been started with roundtables and equity teams and conversations that the principals have with the students. They're actually very enjoyable conversations to sit and listen to, but that work will continue. Secondary pathways, Ms. Zert and I have had some wonderful conversations around innovative pathways that'll provide for internship time and so forth for our students that are looking for career pathways. And then the final one, the early literacy screening that we have started, the dyslexia screener, in order to help support teachers in the classroom with interventions, tier one and tier two interventions that happen within the classroom.
Perfect. Well, thank you for that clarification. It's simplifying a difficult act overall. So I would like to entertain a motion to accept the three-year Student Opportunities Act plan, including the three focus areas.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Do I hear, Mr. Owen makes the mo, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Burke with a second. Any discussion?
And these do get posted publicly as soon as the state reviews them, and that is about a six-to-eight week process. And then they are posted on the state site.
Thank you. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item number six, C, which is the 2024-25 Freetown Regional School Committee calendar?
So at the last meeting, it was asked, we brought up the question about the two days prior to winter break. Prior to winter break? After winter break, excuse me, about the turn of winter break. And the question was asked, could some alternative calendars be created to show having a two-week vacation for winter break? So Renee's done a great job presenting you with a couple of options that you should have received in your package.
Discussion on the options. The first one was the original presentation. The middle one, I believe, is the extension on the winter break. And the third was this starting before Labor Day.
Two of them are before Labor Day.
Two are before Labor Day.
So again, like to dumb it down to my level here, the first one is the original...
What we presented last one, yeah.
The original calendar with the typical starting after Labor Day, okay? Number two, still start after Labor Day, but the effect is we go to school longer in June with the two weeks. Am I reading that correctly? Okay, we're going to get rid of that one. And then the last two is just looking at starting, starting before Labor Day. Yeah, I think that in these towns, I think starting before Labor Day is going to be a stretch, even though it's something to look at.
The question was?
Yep.
Look at options.
I still think that we need to look at the option where this district will not start school after such-and-such date, right? So it's probably happened every fifth or sixth year where Labor Day comes into more of the end of, you know, like around the 7th, 8th, and that pushes it into June. I think that's a little bit more palatable to parents within the district for it. So I will put forward a motion to accept the original school calendar, which is listed here as number one, that was presented at last week's meeting.
Without two weeks.
Without two weeks.
So any other discussion on that?
I believe the state primary is on September 3, which...
That's noted on each of the versions.
Is it?
Yeah, that's consistent.
Yes, we have no school on that day.
Yep. Thank you for that comment. Any other discussion on the calendars? And the clarification piece on the original recommendation was calendar item number one. The other two were options that we had asked for. So the original recommendation from the district is calendar item one. Discussion. Mr. Owen? There's a motion that hasn't been a second, so is there a second?
Yeah, I'll make a second on that.
For discussion?
So we can have discussion, yes.
I'm sorry. Discussion.
So I have a couple of things. One, it always has been a hinge on Labor Day before or after. Mr. Owen makes a very good point, and he made it at the last meeting, that we should look at the actual date and not what holiday is there, because we get screwed up on Juneteenth on the other end of things. So if you pick a day, we will start September, whatever it is, doesn't matter whether it's before or after. We know that at the end of the year, we're in a better place. And I think that that would be preferable to just looking at before or after Labor Day. That's just my personal opinion. However, whenever you're talking about switching something around a holiday, that's a longer discussion, and I don't think we have enough time this year to say. I'm glad that we have these options that, thank you, Renee, so much. I know this wasn't easy. And I know that more and more and more school districts are pre-Labor Day now. And if you're down south, you're in school in July. So it's different everywhere, but we've always been in after Labor Day, and we've clung to that forever. It's just that on the other end of things, if we have a bad winter and a lot of snow, we have June 19th that throws you over to almost the Fourth of July. And we had that back when we had Snowmageddon. And in fact, Fall River barely made it June 30th. We were lucky. We got a couple of days. You remember that year. Okay. Snowmageddon was a bad year, an anomaly, but it can happen again. And that's why I think we should start having more candid discussions about an earlier start time, whether it's we pick September 2 or we figure out another way. No, it'd be quite...
No, I appreciate, and I think that was in part the result where we discussed different options. So we're moving in that direction.
We should.
I think it's noted. But the motion is on the table for the presented calendar number one. We, did we have a second?
Yes.
We did. So all those in favor of calendar one, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Agenda item number seven. Is there anyone here for public participation?
So prior to, somebody come up, I think Ashley, you wanted to make a comment?
If Mr. Sylvia doesn't mind.
Sure.
So I know there was a comment made about identifying students' information. So I just wanted to say that legally, I haven't identified any student information publicly. And by identifying sex or grade level, it doesn't identify who the student is. And if you, as a school committee, would like me to tone down my transparency, please let me know, because I pride myself on educating not just the public, but also all of you on knowing that we could own a student until 22 years old, which is why I disclosed the information about the student being a seventh grader, and also that we have, which Mr. Lacambra didn't know until I went to the town meeting and shared with him, a student that moves in with a high tuition like that, we are responsible for paying. So I pride myself on educating both the public as well as the school committee, but if you would like me to do differently, I will absolutely do so moving forward.
No, I think you should carry on. And I think in a district this small and towns this small and the number in that regard being so low, unfortunately, it is identifiable. But in terms of what you're doing, I would carry on.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but I appreciate your statement and acknowledgement of that.
I agree with Ashley. This conversation started, was it the regional thing, Tom? Where'd we have the meeting at the fire?
At the FES? No, at the...
Yeah, it was the Lakeville Police Department.
Right.
But it's been on my report since...
Right. But there were multiple people who have served, who had no idea that we were responsible. Their question was, why are we responsible? Can't you change that? So that concerns me that there hasn't been that level of transparency in conversation. So I support Ashley 100% of that.
But the obligation is worth the clarification, and that's not specific to a particular student or family.
Correct. Yep.
So you're well within your guide. So, Mr. Owen?
The only thing that I would say is, let's evaluate that on a case-by-case basis, right? And what I mean by that is, we know that there's a cost, and I think we can be transparent on that, but the more we provide information now allows, and it's happened out there, it's unfortunate, that says, oh, now I know who that third-grade female that's at the blind school, right? And this is how much is in that. So I think we just need to err on the side of caution. I don't think that you cross that line, but there is that potential that, to your point, Mr. Sylvia, with such a small population in these two towns, that we could do that, and we should just always try to avoid that whenever possible. But that's the only point that I would say is we look at that.
Right. And then with the budget obligations, it's imperative that we talk about it, but you can't. The size of the district matters. So moving on, any further discussion on that topic? Agenda item number seven, which is public participation. That shall be in accordance with policy. Each speaker will be permitted a maximum of three minutes, during which time they can speak about topics within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. I see someone here for public participation. Welcome.
So Superintendent Strauss, I don't know if I'm able to speak on this before it's been brought to the school committee.
So this was a conversation we had in, previously, in regard to a donation being made.
Yes.
So, yes.
Positivity coming.
Yes.
So first of all, just prefacing this with, public speaking is not in my wheelhouse. So the fact that I'm up here to speak shows that I am passionate about what I am coming up here to talk about. I just wanted to take a moment to thank Superintendent Strauss, first and foremost, for all the hard work that I've seen you put into our district, both on the safety and wellness of our students and staff, as well as curriculum advancement, and the overall support of our students. So, and of course, in addition to that, I want to thank our entire school committee, because obviously it takes a team to do what you all have been doing. Within the past couple of years, I've watched our district take strides with things such as the vestibule projects, which I know the wheels started turning as soon as you began in your role after your walkthroughs, and the Raptor software that we have, the signs that are now up at our schools, the window and door project at Assawamset. And then there's the academic items, such as more AP offerings, the Promethean boards in our classrooms. I know in the last couple of meetings, it was discussed that, I think it was the DESI ratings, how, you know, even after COVID, we've managed to either stay steady or improve while other districts around us have gone down. That is a huge thing that we should be proud of. And I also want to thank those who are ferociously applying for grants for our students to get these additional items for the classroom, for our students. So, anyway, sorry, again, not a proper speaker. Then there's the maybe less obvious and less grandiose type items, but that I think are still a huge deal. I'm extremely excited to see the Assawamset Playground finally come into fruition. I think that's amazing. And one thing that really stood out to me was having banners now for the academic teams when they have accomplishments, just like the athletic teams, because that fosters a sense of pride. And I think that that's very important, that the students who not necessarily are involved in athletics but are on the athletic teams are getting the same recognition now, too. So last year, my family was blessed to be able to make a donation to the vestibule project at Grace. And again, Superintendent Strauss has been amazing and been in constant contact with us. He kept us updated on the progress of that project, let us know everything that was going on along the way, and just fostered a relationship with us where we were kept in the loop. And we, he's always been willing to have meetings with us, calls with us, my husband and I. And we're able to make another donation this year for further safety improvements for the schools. There's been some divisiveness in our district over the past year or so, and I'm just hoping that we can kind of all come together and foster a more inclusive and workable relationship where we're all kind of just going for the same goal on working to better our schools, making things better for our students, not pointing fingers, not blaming, but working together coasively to come up with solutions. So again, I know your jobs aren't easy, principals included, and I just want to thank you all.
Thank you. And on behalf of the entire school committee and district, I can't thank you enough for your generosity, which is incredibly appreciated, but also your kind words and positive approach. It's so thoughtful. And the ability to work with families like you is, I think, why we all do this. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I will say, thank you. I will say to Mr. and Ms. Flutie, have always been about all students. The donation that they are providing is for $8,000, which will go towards, we have a 75,000... a $75,000 appropriation from Senator Roderick for safety on the campus. Greg and I have been in constant communication about ways to use that. We spoke with the Cooks about how they would like to see this money used, because I think they have a voice, without question, and I think it's important. And there are a number of things that we have discussed, one of which, I'm just going to give one for an example. It is vitally important to me, having experienced what I did in Connecticut near Sandy Hook, that access to all classrooms, everyone has. So if I am a teacher here at the high school, for example, and I'm teaching in the math department, and worst-case scenario happens, and I'm walking with my class to the library, and they need to get into a classroom. If the door's locked, the teachers will not have keys. They only have keys to their own particular area. That has to change. You have to have a key to every place in the building, other than a few places, nurse's office, any place there's a safe. But other than that, people, adults, need to have access to get into classrooms. So that is part, one of the projects that we are going to be doing, so that there is a single key for everybody across the board. Of course, we never want to have to spend this money, but this is very proactive. We are looking at also adding cameras to the outside of buildings, which we need more of. So between the $75,000, this $8,000, I will be presenting to the Regional Safety Committee what we are coming up with. But we're very excited.
So just a point of order.
You have to accept the donation.
We have to accept the donation and the purpose, right? So I think for the next meeting, and the vote has to be on the agenda. So we would put that on there, and then the motion would include the amount and the, you know...notwithstanding, we can't thank you very much for this. This is great, but I think from an official perspective...
Right.
We put that on there. So, great.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, move on to agenda item number eight, new business capital community survey from Habib and Associates. I know you touched on this earlier.
Yep. So in our work with Habib and Associates, one of the things that they are trying to do is to gather information from community members, about community members' thoughts about schools, about when was the last time they were in the school, what do they think about the conditions of the schools, and all of those things. These questions are pretty innocuous. However, I do know the school committee's fear of surveys, so I wanted to bring it before all of you, before Habib and Associates ends up sending it out throughout the community. And it's only going to adults. It is not going...
How is this going to be...sorry, how is this going to be distributed?
That much I haven't figured out.
Okay.
My assumption would be digitally.
Yeah, that's my assumption.
But I think at this point, a survey, we would be remiss if we didn't ask the public what they thought, if we're going to help to develop a capital project.
Correct. That is very typical, that they would do a survey to the community.
Right. So I have no objections to this part of the process in the capital subcommittee.
The only thing, a suggestion would be, number two, I am a parent, right? Do we want to get specific of a student in the district today, right? So we have parents that have students that are no longer in the district, we have parents of kids that are not even in the school district.
I am a parent of a current student.
Yeah.
Or a guardian of a...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. That's a good point.
Right. Okay.
Safety and security says good, fair, poor on several of them. I understand that that might have a specific meaning, but it isn't clear. So just showing good, fair, poor.
Maybe a better understanding of what good, clear, poor means?
Yeah.
Well, it ranks it as being good, fair, and poor in several of the options. So...
I don't know why they didn't do a rubric anyway.
Yeah, they should have.
The adequacy score, educational space adequacy assessment.
Right, so I assume what they're asking you to do is to circle one of those?
Oh, no, no, no. That's not the survey. Brenna, that's not the survey.
That's our results.
The survey's only one page.
Oh, that's the...this is the assessment.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I'm looking at something else.
Right, okay.
It was on top of the...
Never mind, I got it, yeah.
Further discussion on 8A. Moving on to 8B. This is...we were approached by the school departments, or the district, or the school committee's attorney, recently about land that has a deeded right of refusal, 92 Howland Road, which abuts the property of the middle school section. As part of the right of refusal, we have 10 days to...there's an offer on the table or a purchase and sale that's on the table between the buyer and the seller. The right of refusal is to allow us to purchase 15 acres and a dwelling for $1.3 million. The discussion today is basically, we're obligated to bring it up as a committee. Options for us is to do nothing, let the 10 days expire, and then the sale has a number of things in the purchase and sale that may not happen anyway, or to vote and sort of pursue the purchase of 15 acres.
For $1.3 million, yeah.
For 1.3. And given some of the budget conversations we had today, I think there's public sentiment to kind of punt. And it would be my recommendation as the chair to do nothing and let the right of refusal expire, and we met the obligation to discuss in a public meeting.
I concur.
Any further discussion on that?
Deb, I think you received a copy from me, right? Just for information purposes, what this was all about. There were some phone calls that came forward saying, we were looking to buy this property to build a school, and that's not true. It was, we had to put this on the agenda simply because of...
Right. In an effort to communicate and collaborate, I think it was goodwill to share with the towns, given in the event that there was interest, we could certainly pursue that Moving on to section nine, which is subcommittee updates, it would be my recommendation, as the discretion of the chair, to table that for the evening in the interest of time. I would also, I'm not sure I need a motion, but I do have to take a quick recess here. I have a procedural technical question about the budget vote, but I also need to do something else, and then we have a presentation. So quick recess. Do I need a motion for that?
No, we just...
Brief recess.
Five minutes.
All right.
Five-minute break. Brenna, I just have a question.
What presentation? Because I have a question.
Last item on the agenda is number 10, other business that may properly come before the meeting. This is an interesting one, in a good way. We have three members that this is their last meeting. Brenna Donahue joined us just recently, and your impact on the committee and your insights has been amazing, so we appreciate your service. But we wanted to recognize you. We have two presentations, one from the committee, but also from the community through Mr. Strauss.
So we have a citation for you, and I will read it. From the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the State Senate, official citation. Be it known that Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Brenna Donahue in recognition of your dedicated service and commitment to the Freetown Lakeville Regional School Committee, and be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success. That the citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested in a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. And we thank Senator Roderick for his work to make this happen. But we have, on behalf of the school committee, central office, we have for you...thank you.
Now, we have two other members. We'll do this at the same time, because I'm not sure how many years of public service. There's a new role as a taxpayer I learned tonight. You can come and approach the podium, and you'll be all set. So we appreciate that. But both Steve and Gene, you've been mentors to many. You've been with us through good times and bad times and challenging times with the budget. Not many people can say even served through a pandemic, so we appreciate...I will certainly miss both of you and your expertise, and I think I speak on behalf of the committee. I can't thank you enough for your service. The kids in the district are better because of your service. So thank you for that, Mr. Owen. No need for questions.
Nine years of dedicated...
Only comments. And Ms. Cox...
Same. I don't need to repeat it, because it's 20 of 10. But for your nine years of dedicated service and commitment to the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District, everyone thanks you. And for Gene, your 22 years of dedicated service and commitment to the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District.
Good job, Renee.
Two pandemics. Happy dog.
And the last meeting was the latest one, so...
Yeah. It's been great. Because when I first started, we weren't a regional school. We had four committees. Remember, Bob, the Bill, all those meetings? My God, we still had dial phones, too, so things have changed.
Mr. Owen, any comments?
Been great.
No, I...we certainly don't do it for the money, right? I enjoyed this, and I would still be doing it, but life gets in the way and travel, what have you. So, you know, welcome three new members, and it's a challenge. And, you know, what I will say is, on this side of the table, we vote for 2,800 students and staff. If I was to vote for my two kids, I would vote much different, right? And so that's going to be a challenge, and anybody that sits on either side for years to come is going to have to work through that. So I definitely enjoy my time, I'm not going away. You may see me on the podium on that piece, but...
As a taxpayer, asking questions.
I'll be asking questions. The problem is I have to get it under three minutes.
Three minutes. Three minutes.
We're going to keep you to the...
So I think all of you, your priorities, first, supporting students in the district is well documented. So for that, on behalf of the committee, thank you for your service. It's probably fitting for you to make a joint motion or argue between you who makes the motion to adjourn.
Some of you.
And then do we see a second? Do I hear a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are adjourned.